Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here with us. I call for the order of the regular Dearborn Heights City Council meeting at 6:03 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
Present.
Moby Dunne.
Here.
Nancy Breier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Present.
Denise Nellanowski-Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
And Tom Winsell.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we start our meeting here, ladies and gentlemen, I just have a few things that I just want to get out here before we even start our Pledge of Allegiance. You know, I was not in attendance at the last city council meeting. I know I've sent several emails to my colleagues in letting them know that our meetings have been repetitively asking many of the same questions or some of us not really doing our homework for, you know, the reasons maybe we're all somewhat busy, but we have signed up to do our work. And so I'm asking you today to please be mindful to those who are at home. This is going to be a very, very long meeting. I don't anticipate us to be here for four hours. And I hope that you guys could acknowledge that email and we can make it easier for those in the audience, those on Zoom, and then those who are at home watching us, please. Also, before we continue, this past couple of weeks, I know that there has been so many innocent lives across the U.S., across the globe, back home in the Middle East, you know, in Florida, North Carolina, people are struggling. We have lost so many lives. I know just here in our very own community, we just lost somebody by the name of Hash Kamal Jawad. And so I want to go ahead and give a moment of silence for all of those who have lost their lives, whether it's natural disasters or being targeted by, you know, occupiers and terrorists. I want us to put our heads down and please just give a whole minute moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, I'm going to have our Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Congresswoman, thank you. While you're standing, please join us at the podium for a presentation by Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib.
Thank you so much for Council President Badun for inviting me here. As you all know, I have the privilege and honor to be working on the federal budget. And we get a number of proposals. We're allowed to choose about 15 proposals for the federal budget through the community-funded project. And one of the great things that we get to do is work with our local electeds, figure out what some of the priority issues, especially when we're constantly competing for those federal grants with other communities consistently, is how do we try to, again, be able to maybe provide that push to be able to get closer to what we need. As you all know, I told many of my colleagues when I submitted this proposal, if you don't believe me, come to my district. I'm going to show you a firehouse that's sinking. And they said, what? I said, it's on clay that's now illegal to be used to build. And my firefighters can't even open the door. They have to sometimes adjust the door for them to get out. And to be honest, when I went to present a check to the chief and the mayor, I was there and it was leaking as well, right above where the fire truck is. Anybody go down there? It looks beautiful from the outside, but please know, like, there's a lot of structural issues there. And so we were able to get $500,000 in seed money. So we have a lot of work to do. We're looking for partners continuing, of course, at the Wayne County level, as well as to stay in other places to be able... It's echoing, but... Do I give this to you?
We will join you.
Oh, okay.
How about that?
Yeah, that'll be great.
Take a photo of us?
Does anybody have questions about this?
No.
Okay.
Keep on coming.
You got to put the proposals...
Bigger, bigger checks. Appreciate you.
Of course, thanks for inviting me.
We'll take a couple of steps back here.
Okay. One, two, three. Just a couple of announcements. Okay, just really quick. For all of my Dearborn Heights residents listening in, we are still backlog on IRS cases, so please though, keep sending them our way. It's not about you, I promise. I swear it's not. It's one of our number one cases. The next issue is we have, we had over 150 cases for Americans with ties to the 12th congressional district. Many come from Dearborn Heights that need evacuation from Lebanon, including one of our veterans who received two Purple Hearts, did two tours in Iraq. We got 64 of those families out so far, but we want to continue to make sure that our family is getting fixed up. Just know it's getting more and more difficult for many of our families to even get to the Beirut airport. But please, you know, not only prayers, but make sure that we continue to educate people in understanding the strong roots that many of our families have with Lebanon. And I can tell you from folks that are there to go to school or engineers, and the cost of living is there so much, much more affordable than it is here. You know, I hear this constant, well, they choosing to live there. You can go to Japan or any other country. There's Americans everywhere. They should not be treated any different than any other Americans that we need to evacuate. I don't care if they're in Afghanistan or in Pakistan, but continue. Thank you all so much that have reached out already. I know more and more cases are coming to our office, but we're here to help in any way we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Thank you. Next up, we have a city council resident recognition by Councilman Ahmad. I will join him.
Councilor Chair, fellow council members, ladies and gentlemen, esteemed guests. Today we gather to celebrate a remarkable local business that has become a cherished part of our community. A Sayed Meat Market, established in 2014 by the dedicated duo Ali and Iman Sayed, this market is more than just a place to buy quality meat. It is a testament to hard work, community spirit, and family values. Ali brings with him an impressive 25 years of industry expertise. And together with Iman, they have cultivated a business that focuses quality and professionalism at every turn. From the moment you step through the doors of a Sayed Meat Market, you are not just a customer. You are welcomed into a warm and inviting family atmosphere. What truly sets a Sayed Meat Market apart is their unwavering commitment to giving back to our community. Through partnerships with organizations such as Aman, Amity, Internal Light, Blue Hands, United, and many more, Ali and Iman actively uplift families in need, ensuring that no one is in our community is left behind. Their contributions extends beyond their products as they engage with local events and collaborate with our fire and police departments, as well as the Crestwood, Dearborn, and District Seven school districts. Today, we recognize a Sayed Meat Market not just for their exceptional products, but for their exemplary role as community stewards. Their dedication to service and support has made a significant impact, and we are grateful to have them in our community. On behalf of the city council and the residents of our community, I am proud to present this award to Ali and Iman Sayed. Thank you for your hard work, your commitment to quality, and your passion for uplifting those around you. Here's to many, many years of success and community partnership. Dearborn Heights City Council Certificate of Recognition, presented to Ali and Iman Sayed, a Sayed Meat Market, in recognition of their exceptional community service and dedication, outstanding contribution to local initiative, and unwavering commitment to the well-being of our residents. Signed by Council Chair Badun, myself, all council members.
Tom, make sure you're in there.
Yes, Thomas.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Councilor Chair.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Well, Ali and Iman are up there. I know these two have done so much for all area communities, not just Dearborn Heights. And I know all these other communities have really showed them a lot of respect and thanking them a lot, where we haven't done that in Dearborn Heights. As much work as they do for Dearborn Heights and the things that they donate and volunteer for, it goes unrecognized. And I just started dealing with them a little bit in the last six months, and they've come through for us, my organizations, every time. And I hope this is just the start of the recognition that you guys do for our community. Thank you, everything you do.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
I just want to also echo what Councilman Winsell said. You know, Al Sayed Meat Market is actually a staple in this community, honestly. Everything you hear and people talk about Al Sayeds, Al Sayeds. I personally shop there on a daily basis. If I ever need anything, Ali's always reaching out to me. Iman, I appreciate you guys for everything you do in the community, honestly. Thank you. Thank you for supporting all the school events and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, it goes without notice and without sad. This is just a token of appreciation. The Al Sayed family, any event, any charity giving, any fundraising, any, any time it comes for a helping hand, you can always count on Iman and Ali, and I mean that truly. I don't think there's ever been a time where I've looked at a flyer and it said, all people that have donated, you know 100%. Iman and Ali from Al Sayed Meats are 100% donating. And they're not doing it for the recognition. They're doing it because that's who these individuals are. And so one more congratulations to you.
You obviously wouldn't be able to do without the support of our community. You guys are our backbone, so we appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
We love you guys.
Thank you.
We have one more.
Okay, we have one more special one for this evening. We would like to welcome Honorable Dr. Yusuf Musallam with us today, this evening. Dearborn Heights City Council Proclamation of Appreciation honoring Dr. Yusuf Musallam. On behalf of the Dearborn Heights City Council, we extend our deepest congratulations on being recognized as the 2024 National Superintendent of the Year by the National Association of Schools Superintendents. This well-earned recognition reflects not only your unwavering dedication to the Crestwood School District, but also the meaningful and lasting impact you have had in our community. Under your leadership, Crestwood School District has grown into something we can all proud of. Through your tireless work, you have elevated the educational experience for every student, making sure they receive the support and opportunities they deserve. You have also fostered strong connections between the schools and our community, showing us that when we invest in our youth, we invest in the future of Dearborn Heights. Your leadership has placed Dearborn Heights on the national stage, and your efforts have been rightfully acknowledged. Thank you to your guidance. Crestwood has become a standout district, one that only, not only serves its students, but has earned national recognition for excellence. This award is a reflection of your commitment to pushing boundaries and seeking the very best for our schools. The city council is proud to stand with you in celebrating the incredible achievement. We are grateful for all you have done for our schools and our community. And we know that with your continued leadership, there is no limit to what Crestwood and Dearborn Heights can accomplish. Once again, congratulations, Dr. Yusuf Musallam.
Council members?
We'll do the score numbers after.
First off, I am so humbled and honored to receive this from the city council, from the city of Dearborn Heights. You know, I'll be brief. I'm a superintendent, so I could talk forever, but I'll be brief. In 2019, I had the honor of being named the new superintendent of the Crestwood School District.
Thanks to Lynn.
Lynn Sinia was a board member at that time. And I've been blessed over these years to have a Board of Education that has been more than supportive. I know President Al Ziyat, trustee Williamson, trustee Ayman, I hope I didn't miss anyone else. Najah, yep. And then, you know, of course, trustee Fawaz, and trustee Badun, and trustee Sabo. I say this, and I say this all the time. You know, it's been very humbling, all the congratulations I've received. But my response is this. This is an award for our community. This is an award for our city. This is an award, this is an award for our students, our staff. I tell people the role of a superintendent is to give and to support and to serve their constituents, their students, their staff, so that they can have everything they need to be successful. And with the support of city council, there hasn't been a time where one of you have not responded when we needed something as a school district. And I know you do the same thing for D7, and I know you do the same thing for Westwood, because you care about the children of this community in Dearborn Heights. Doesn't matter which school district it is, because we're all one. I want to thank... And I'm honored and privileged that I work with the superintendents from D7 and Westwood on a regular basis. You know, we talk, and with the current situations occurring that are impacting all of us, we have conversations on how we can help one another, and we continue those conversations. With that said, again, I am honored and I am humbled. I appreciate this. As mentioned in here, this is an award for our community, an award for our city, an award for our students, because now we are on the national map. This is when it gets hard. Now we got to go to the next level.
Dr. Musallam, a stand-up guy, thank you so much for your services to this community. Thank you to the trustee here. I also want to recognize our trustee president, Danielle Al Ziyat, our trustee, let's give her a round of applause. Trustee Ayman, who's here with us as well, and trustee Williams, who's here with us as well. Trustee Janoon also told me she, she had no idea her son had a soccer game. That's just how busy she is with the district, but she's also here on Zoom, so we can recognize her as well. I'm going to throw a quick little curveball.
Yeah. I just want to make a comment, please. Okay, thank you. Dr. Musallam, there's so many people and organizations that are recipients that benefit from his leadership. And my nonprofit Jamie's Kids, many commissions that we have, this recently, this past weekend, the Firefighters Open House, a direct reflection on his leadership are the students. And the way these students come out when you need them to help, I mean, anytime I need some, I don't have to say, how many can you give me? They go, how many do you need? If I need 10, I need 20, I need 30, they show up. And they don't even show up, they're fantastic, dedicated workers, and that's a direct reflection on the leadership of the school district. And we're honored and blessed to have you in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Again, thank you, guys. I just want to throw a quick little, I'm going to go a little bit off of our actual agenda here is today. Madam Clerk, if that's okay, with us in the room today, we have Dr. Mohammed Sob. He's the gentleman sitting here in the wheelchair. Dr. Mohammed Sob, most recently, was in the hospital, I believe, for a little bit over a month and a half. He was in, coming home from being out with his children. He was getting some stuff out of the vehicle, just told his son to go inside. It was a little windy outside. A tree that belonged, a city tree that was either, I'm assuming it would be considered diseased, had enough wind that where it fell on top of the gentleman here today who's with us. He asked me if he can come in today. I know that our meetings usually take a little bit long, but this is a man who's not just, you know, not just because he's an elected official, we can't give him our time and day in the beginning. So I said to myself, please come on in, yes. We want to hear your story. We want to know what happened. And we want those who are at home to know to be careful, because this isn't just happening in Dearborn Heights, just in our, in our own neighborhood, in our own backyard, Livonia, a child died because a tree fell on top of a home that belonged to the city. This is happening all across the country. And so what he wants to do here today is raise a little bit of awareness. I told him that 100% the stage belongs to you tonight. And he's not coming here because he wants anybody to feel sorry for him. He's here today because he said, Mo, truly, this is me. I was a man that rode 18 miles a day on a bike, and today I'm in a wheelchair. This could happen to anybody. So he's here today to spread awareness. And he wants to share his stories. So if it's okay with you guys in the Honorable Council, I'd like them to come up to the podium and share his story, and also to all give him our undivided attention and a standing ovation to Mr. Sob. Hello. There you go. Mr. Cooper, I need your help.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, my name is Mohammed Sob, and I'm here just to talk about exactly what happened to me that day. What I feel is, was a little reckless, maybe a little negligent by the city of Dearborn Heights regarding the tree that fell on me, my vehicle, and my home on August 27, 2024. For years, I had been contacting the city about this tree in front of my house. It was diseased and it was dangerous. It was clear to me and others that this tree could fall and hurt somebody, anybody. But the city didn't do anything about it despite, despite my warnings. Not only did I warn the city, I actually contacted them multiple times for me, myself, to take it down, and they refused. They said no, and they refused my offer and kept this dangerous tree standing, putting me, my family, and my neighbors at risk. On August 27, after coming home from work about 6:00 PM, the tree fell and pinned me underneath for over 25 minutes. I suffered serious injuries, fractures to my spine, shattered my pelvis, multiple rib fractures, a scapular fracture, ligament damage in my neck, and other parts of my body. I'm still dealing with the pain, emotional stress, and knowing that all of this could have been prevented makes it even worse. I don't believe this was just an accident. I think it was a result of how reckless this city is. The tree was dangerous, but they did nothing about it. And even when I offered to handle it myself, they said no. And I believe that was just careless. To make matters worse, while I was pinned under that tree, the other half of the tree fell on my house, causing even more damage. The city's refusal to take care of this problem didn't just affect me, it put my whole family in danger and damaged our property as well. The city didn't show even the smallest level of care in dealing with this dangerous tree. What happened to me wasn't just a mistake. It was a result of reckless actions that have left me and my family suffering physically, emotionally, and even financially. I'm here to make my story heard and that there's a record of the reckless recklessness and the gross negligence the city showed. I hope this council realizes how serious this is and takes responsibility for what happened. I also hope that no other residents of Dearborn Heights have to go through what I've gone through. The city needs to act quickly and responsibly in the future when residents report safety issues like this. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you take action to make sure that this doesn't happen to anyone else again. So when I got home about 6:00 PM, it was a beautiful day. My wife was sitting in the backyard having a cup of coffee. I just got off work, picked up my son from football practice, 13-year-old, and I had some stuff that I was loading in my truck that was sitting in front of my house. And there was no, there was no sign of a storm. And my son asked me if he needed my help, 13-year-old son. I told him, just go to the back, you look tired, I'll take care of it. And a few minutes later, I'm packing the first thing in my truck, and the wind picked up. And I said, you know what? Let me finish packing my stuff up. So I went to load the truck again, and I heard the tree crack. And I turned to look, and this tree's coming down at me. And I had no shot. I couldn't get out of the way, and just pinned me into the ground, and the rest was history. And this is why I'm sitting here right now. And I'm unable to walk for at least another six to eight months. And this is devastating, devastating for me and my family. It's not easy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sob. My heart is with you and your family. I think everybody in this room here hears your story at home and on Zoom, and we are at your service, however we can help. And I'll be in contact with you, you know, in the future. Thank you. You know, it's not easy to come up here and share your story, and it's not easy to come here today and say, you know, I'm coming in here today because, one, I've made these complaints. And let me tell you, it's extremely hard also. You know, the city on a daily is constantly receiving so many of these phone calls. But we are the, you know, we are the council, we are the city. All of us collectively here have to understand that we have a job. And when we, when we are not on top of our job, and we're not on top of what we need to do and reach the expectations, dangerous things like this, this man could have lost his life had he been an inch to the right or inch to the left. My heart is with you and your family. Again, thank you for coming here and sharing your story. If there's anything you need, you can reach out to us. I know at the first, you know, he gave me a call. Actually, I jumped off my son at daycare, and his brother-in-law told me he was disappointed that I had not reached out to the individual who had the tree fall on top of him, and I said, I have no idea what you're talking about. That same day, I spoke, reached out to some of the council members, I think I emailed all of the council members, and I actually headed, I headed over to the hospital and I visited Mr. Sob inside the hospital. You know, to a physician like himself, who, you know, sees patients as not being evaluated by other physicians, I can only imagine that. And second, sitting on, you know, in a wheelchair for a man who used to ride his bike for close to 18 to 20 miles a day, is no longer able to do so. My heart is with you, Mr. Sob, and I can tell you, I think every single person on this room here feels for you and stands in solidarity with you. Thank you. Any other council members?
Yes, Councilor Chair. Mr. Sob, you know, honestly, the city could do better. It's as simple as that. The city could have did and should have did better.
Thank you.
I hope you have full recovery.
Councilor Chair.
Congressman Ahmad.
Dr. Sob, I'm sorry this has happened to you. It's definitely a lesson learned by the city. We, all we could do right now, pray for you, hopefully for a speedy recovery. I'm sorry this has happened, and thank you for sharing your experience with us.
I also pray for your full recovery.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Council Chair.
Sir Councilman. I'm sure we all feel the same way up here. And I don't want to repeat everything I said, but, you know, may God bless you and for a speedy recovery and hope everything works out good. Hopefully, you're riding your bike again next spring. Thank you, Councilman.
Next up, I have agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad, uh, Councilman Sob.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the amended budget for the regular meeting of October 8, 2024, submitted.
Council Chair.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion?
Uh, but removing 9C.
Which is the clerk's senior?
Yeah. And Council Chair.
Hang on one second, sir. You're eliminating 9C. Councilman Sob.
I'd like to also remove 7A.
What is that?
The marquee sign.
Which one?
Marquee sign.
7A? I don't have a 7A.
Uh, yeah, that's a bit consideration of bids.
No, 7A.
So. I think it's 7A. Oh, I'm so sorry. It's 9I. Nine, nine.
9I.
9I. Parks Recreation Director Sauer Campfield signed a marquee sign. You want to remove, is that 9C and 9I?
One second. Sorry. Yeah, 9C and 9I.
Okay. Councilman Sob, would you like to amend your motion to eliminating 9C and 9I?
Yes.
You can be excused. Thank you.
I second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob for agenda approval with the elimination of 9C and 9I, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion here?
Council Chair.
Councilman, Monsel? Thank you. I know 9I has been a little touchy subject, and I don't know how we work this, if we just eliminate or table it? Or?
For clerks and...
Just saying the same thing? Okay.
Another discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. I'm so sorry, Mr. Sob, but did you want to say something? Yeah. I'm, somebody from the audience had... Okay. I, I will reach out to, I, I will reach out with you guys tomorrow, and I'll get the DPW director on it, okay? Can you, can you, can you come up? Can you come up to the mics for that? It's okay.
Do you have the address, ma'am?
Yeah. Well, I have my address. It's directly above...
You can give it to George, both addresses.
You can fill it out after you, you speak.
Okay. So I live on Macmillan, and I informed my neighbor that we were coming here today. And she told me, please, well, multiple neighbors, told me, please mention the one across the street from my house. And I'm actually afraid to have my kids outside at this point because it wasn't that strong of wind that pushed my tree down. The one across from me is clearly dead. It's got branches. They don't even have leaves growing on it anymore. And she told me she's called. I don't know if she has, but she mentioned she's called quite a few times. And it's never been checked. It's never been checked. Nobody's passed by it, none of the above.
Just past information.
Hang on one second. Let her, let her finish.
Okay. And my stump, they picked up the tree after it fell. They picked it up pretty quickly. But my stump has never been taken off. My kids ask me all the time, can I get rid of that stump? Because it brings back a lot of bad memories.
I will reach out to him as well. I mean, I can tell you right now, our, our DPW director has been on, and he's only been with us for a very short period of time. I will definitely reach out to him, and I'll get with the doc and Ray as well tomorrow.
Thank you.
If you can also just share your information
Sure.
with George, and we'll go from there. Again, I'm sorry to you and your family. Yeah, we will. Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad with elimination of 9C and 9I. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Council members, please, let's not be afraid of engaging with our ayes and nays, please. Thank you. Next up, approval of the minutes. Minutes of the regular meeting of September 12, oh, I'm reading that. Approval of the minutes.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meeting of September 24, 2024, as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carry. Maybe my coffee's just hit, so I'm a little bit more hyper. Next up, we have public hearing and comments on agenda items only. This is on agenda items only. Please step up, state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
I don't know if you'll consider us agenda item only.
Can you pull up the mic tone a little bit?
I don't know if you'll consider us agenda item only, but you allowed the gentleman to come in here with the tree falling, and I'd like to say something about that.
Yeah, I'm gonna allow it this time.
Okay. I'm heartbroken and purely disgusted with the city. I've worked, started over a year ago with Roger. We were supposed to be working on some kind of resolution for the trees. Nothing became of that. I've come here for at least four years and sent numerous videos to this administration of my own tree in front of my house that just fell out of nowhere. This is bull crap that somebody has to suffer an injury like this because of the neglect for years of this city. U.S. Council needs to step up and start designating some money and get these trees taken down ASAP. No one else needs to be injured. It's enough.
Anyone else in the audience? You ask for an additional minute? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good evening, Zohair Abdulhaq, Rosemary at Dearborn Heights. Several items I want to talk about tonight. The first one, I want to thank the Chief of the Police for bringing up the issue of 10 additional officers and one additional dispatcher. The city council passed resolution and put out $380,000 to upgrade the dispatch room. Three years passed, nothing happened. So I hope the city council, since you are responsible for, for the finance of this city, to look if we have enough money in the budget. And if we do, I really appreciate it if you pass it and approve it because really, the safety of our people comes before anything else. The second thing, you have some items, CDBG, DR. You already passed in 9, 10, 24, 9A resolution contract with Wade Trim. And the same rates, hourly rate they have, they are on the agenda today. Now, why do we have to pass a second contract for the same services which we agreed on last month? I hope you will just let the one which passed in 9, 9A on 9, 10, 20, 24. And that's, you know, what should stand. And if anything over $5,000 in services, we should follow the charter, and we should go out for bid. Nothing of this, you know, we know this guy, we know that guy. Everything should be going out for bid. And if people cannot handle their jobs, then they should either leave or be fired because some, some people were fired for less than what was, what we heard today here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abdulhaq. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Rain Muscat, Havelock, Dearborn Heights. Real quick, I didn't catch what you all did with 9I.
We removed it.
And it just removed it, not going to look at it again?
No, we are. We'll take it to a study session.
Okay, because I, I, I seen it, and I was gonna bring up 9I with a change order. And every time I see a change order, I kind of cringe because I, I read the paperwork and talk about the conduit was too small. This is something that should have been very visible to the contractor.
That's why we removed it.
Yeah, and that, that's good. Thank you for, for looking out. I appreciate it.
A compliment to the council from council, from former Councilman Muscat?
When you guys do a good job, you gotta give a compliment. When we do a bad job, you're so quick to bash us. You do a good job, you do a good job.
Thank you.
We learn from the bust.
You're an electrician.
Ray, this is for you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Compliment from Ray. That's the greatest way to start this meeting. Next up, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair, I do have somebody on Zoom.
I am so sorry.
That's okay. I am going to ask her to unmute.
Ms. Janun. We see you. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Sure. Najah Janun, Dearborn Heights, and I am on Whitefield Street. So I'm sorry, I had no intention of, you know, attending.
Hang on one second. There's nothing from the audience. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Janun.
So I was unable to attend. Like, I ran to my car because my son has a soccer game in Bowling Green. So anyway, I just wanted to congratulate and thank the council for recognizing Dr. Musalem. So as you all know, he was awarded the 2024 National Superintendent of the Year. Really well deserved. And I wanted to thank him for doing everything he can to move the district forward and ensuring that there is transparency and thinking of, thinking of and putting the community first always. The award is well deserved, and it shows the district's really made the right choice. So yes, I'd like to thank Lynn because I know she was a part of that a lot of things several years back. And I just want him to know that we appreciate him, and we want to again thank the council for recognizing, recognizing him. So thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you. Dr. Musalem, you're pretty popular here tonight in these chambers. You know, must be nice to be a Musalem. Or it's married to the, to the Turfy Bezy, right? One of the, one of those? Uh, next up, anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none, we're gonna go move over to fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
With the Dearborn Heights City Council, approve the current claims and see ACH wire transfer 6-1 through 6-36 as submitted.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Sob. Did I hear almost a support from Councilman Constance?
You did.
All right, we're gonna go with Councilman Constance then.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob, any discussion?
I'd like to remove item number 14 as we got the information from the mayor regarding the $23,000, but not the $7,000.
You know, I, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I actually asked for this to come back on here, Councilman. And it's because, you know, I, I want to be fair as fair. We requested for this to be on the, to get a, you know, the report. The report was emailed to us, maybe not the right way, right? You know, we asked for it, I know he gave it to Mr. Un, aka Mr. Hoskash, and to give it to us. But either way, it was received. I think it was received childishly, but it was still given to us. And so for that reason, I don't think IB Electric needs to stand before this anymore. I mean, I think the administration, specifically the mayor, knows we're not joking when we say you're not gonna spend any more money without our approval. It is what it is. But as far as, you know, removing IB Electric's $7,000, I think it's time, you know, we put this to bed, we settled this. The man did the work. I don't like the fact that he did the work, you know, without the approval of the council or didn't go out for bids because that is illegal under the charter. But I, you know, I could tell you right now, and I'll swear an oath, I'm never approving another dollar if it does not come before this council. And I'm not gonna support another position unless it comes before this council because that's what the charter says, and we all swore that oath. Please, point of order. Nothing from the audience, Mr. Abdulhaq. Please.
Point of order, please.
Nothing from the audience. So I, I think today we need to just put this to rest. There's been a lot of back and forth and, and, you know. Look, IB Electric is a reputable company that has done almost every single part of this building, and at the Justice Center, and at the library, and at the senior centers.
This has nothing to do with IB Electric. It's about the process.
And I agree with you.
And the process was not followed. So you took an oath, an original oath, and stick to that oath. We're not gonna take another oath.
But we made a promise that if he gets the information, that we would approve it.
He doesn't listen.
But, but you received it.
No, I didn't. You did not receive the $7,000 investigation.
Council Chair, yeah, I have to disagree with you this time. We did not receive the right investigation. Received the initial one. We just need to know through the investigation who authorized the new contract for the $7,000.
Mayor, who authorized the $7,000 for the new contract?
Council Chair, I sent you the...
That was for the $23,000.
It has, Edner. No, that's for the whole thing, Council Chair. It's the whole thing. I, I sent it to all of you guys.
Well, I will tell you guys that I skimmed, I, I skimmed through it. You didn't get it? I didn't get it from, I got it from...
Yeah, I got it from Mr. Un.
Yeah. What's that, I mean, what's that mean? You get it from an outside person? Was it a doctor?
You have it too, Councilman. I, I can look it up right now. So if you look at your emails, that's your problem.
Mayor, he's saying, point of order, guys, come on. Guys, nothing from the audience either, please.
I did send it to all council members. And Mr. Owen, since you mentioned his name, he FOIA'd it, and he got it the same way.
Did the council have to FOIA in order to get it as well?
No, no, you got it too.
Why didn't you give it to us when you first asked?
Because we were waiting for the final investigation. That's what you received, the final investigation.
Nice. You know, the real efficacy would have been to email the council before you sent it.
Council Chair, you get, you get the final investigation. I told you I'll send it when it's final. It was final, I sent it to you. And when you guys made a big deal out of it here, it was FOIA'd.
I, I mean, look, I'm gonna tell you, I think I stand where, where this is. But if the council wants to say, hey, if this was not the $7,000 investigation, did you, did you work on the $7,000 investigation?
Council Chair, the whole work was entailed in the investigation, the whole work.
Okay. That's what I assumed.
So the only difference, the, between the $23,000 and the $7,000, the $23,000, we got reimbursed from DTE. The $7,000, we didn't...
Who authorized the $7,000 work?
It's, it's an investigation.
Can you say?
It's an investigation, Council Chair.
Do you know who it was that would have said? I didn't read the entire investigation.
Well, I sent it two weeks ago. Over two weeks. If you guys look at it, it's in there. I don't want to mention people's names here, Council Chair.
If it's in the investigation, it doesn't matter.
Council, it, it does. It's in the investigation, but it's still ongoing litigation involving it, so I would not advise to say it, but it's in the investigation.
Thank you, Roger. So, Mayor, you don't want to say who, who it is?
It's an, it's an investigation.
I know.
I, I sent you exactly what you, you guys requested.
Council Chair, please, let's move on.
It was not the administration, just to be clear.
Point of order.
It was not the city council.
Okay. We're not gonna spend all day on this.
Council Chair, let's just vote to either keep it or remove that one item.
Okay, well, I'm, we're gonna go ahead. I'm gonna honor Councilman Sob's to remove it. I try, you know, I'm, I really, I'm, I'm trying to work with the administration. I really am. Like, I'm not trying to make this into a, you know, a back and forth bickering. I actually asked, I think I was the one that requested to put it on because they didn't even have it on. I requested for this to be on the agenda. But I will take it to a vote with elimination of...
Number 14.
14.
Number 14. Okay? Motion to remove number 14. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constance with the amended motion. Well, Councilman Sob, do you amend your motion?
Yes, to remove item 14.
Councilman Constance, do you approve that?
I think we should finally vote on this and get it done.
Well, that's what we're doing. But we're amending that motion. So if either your vote can go yes to remove it, or no, not to remove it?
Yes, to remove it.
Okay. So you, you support to remove it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just get a comment. You know, IB Electric deserves this money. I mean, they, they did the work. It's not their fault. But it's a matter, matter of principle and following the charter. And we gotta stick by our guns. We can't waver on this item, and then someone else is gonna... We, we gotta stick to our guns and do the right thing, follow the rules completely. I'm sorry to IB Electric. I said at the last meeting that I wish we could pay them, if possible, but it's just, it's, it's just a matter of principle right now.
Thank you. All right. Uh, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constance with the removal of 14. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, me.
Okay, so you got a nay?
So that's a no.
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Hassan Sob.
Yes.
Tom Winslow.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer.
No.
Robert Constance.
Yes.
Inmobi Do.
Yes.
Motion carry, 6-1.
Thank you. Consideration of bids, there are none. Reports from the mayor, funding scout services.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'd like to recommend the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the proposal for funding scout services between the city and Wade Trim. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue a one-time payment of $29,000 from GL account number 101-200-818.000 and $67,000 from GL account number 592-536-818.000 as outlined in 8A. And I'd like to throw in that they saved us, secured $26 million in grants.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
I know, I, I'm sorry I did email Mr. Deep late today, but I, I saw some discrepancy in the contract. I know it says in the top three years, but if you go to the schedule, it says a two-year. Are we looking, is this fee for a three-year or two-year? And I don't like the fact that before, what the grant was $3,000 apiece, now it's like open-ended kind of fees. I mean, keep, I mean, beside the fact that almost, it almost doubled there. I mean, beside the fact that they almost doubled their, whatever their fees.
Okay, Councilman Ahmad, I'm sorry I didn't get your email.
I know, I'm sorry, I was kind of late today.
All day.
Yeah, I know.
But if you're looking at the two-year, I think he's making reference to the past two years and the first, so what he was able to accomplish in the past two years.
If you look at the contract, it says proposal three years. But if you go down to the second page, or the third page, I'm sorry, it said the schedule. It says, assuming a notice to proceed as given by the owner before November first, twenty twenty-four, we anticipate the extent for a period of two years through November first, twenty twenty-six. So are we doing two years or doing three years?
Two years.
And is this, what's up?
This is for two years.
Two years? So then the motion is wrong, and the fee, so we're looking, this is ninety-six thousand for two years?
Yes, so the reason for this is we have a CIP schedule that we need assistance with. The CIP schedule is supposed to terminate in twenty-six. So that's the stuff that we have to complete by twenty-six. So that's what the schedule is. So if we approve it today, it will go on until November first.
Twenty twenty-six. And the ninety-six thousand, that's for two years, correct?
Yes, so this is based on quarters, a number of quarterly schedules, and then assistance with the stuff that they've provided work on. And I think you have in your package, a list of what was planned and what's been, you know, what was completed, and what we have planned coming up, something like this.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb. The only, I mean, the issue that I have with this, I mean, they're only going to cover number one and number two. Number three, which is the grant writing, before it was only three thousand, you know, a file. Now it's like open-ended, it depends how much time it takes for them working on it.
It's time and material. So what it says time and material is based on this. So what we have, what we have, a list of projects. So the stuff that we obtained, the grants that were approved, I'm not paying anymore on it just so. There won't be any assistance needed on writing the grant. We will have assistance on filing, you know, because these things are continuous. So you have progress reports every three months, you have meetings. So we pay time and material based on this. Now, the new, the pending, which if we have identified new, and I just got a word today that they're working on a two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred-thousand dollars annually for the fire department. So if we go after this, and we have a good chance to get it, then we will pay progress. But we continue, I track the expenditures based on fees paid and grants awarded. And according to my numbers, we're less than point three, zero point three five nine percent of fee paid versus money received. So I'm less than one percent, and this is only on the stuff that was approved. If I get the pending, which I have, a number of grants are still pending, they're not denied, they're pending earmarked. So if I receive that, my fee will go down to zero point two nine percent of fee paid versus grant received. Return on investment-wise, I.
So you're telling me Wade Trim is not going to be working on the grant writing right now? You're going to be, they are?
On going forward, the grants that we received don't need any more application.
Correct, the new applications.
I only need the progress reports, and so that's working. And if we identify a new grant, like the fire department, today's grant, we just got it. If we identify a new grant that we want to go after, and we qualify for, yes, they will provide assistance with that. And this is the one that we just got today.
So that's what I'm saying, but they don't have, like before, the contract we had before was the three thousand per grant they applied for. Now they have it open-ended.
It's not open-ended, it's called time and material. So we agree on the fee. Well, you know, we did the same for CDBG. I mean, they have the same contract with CDB. They give you the rates they charge for services provided, and then you pay those rates based on every assignment you give them. So if you assign, if you assign ten hours, you agree on hourly rate and you pay it.
You know what happened here, Mr. Deeb?
No.
To me, Funding Scout was getting comfortable by saying, well, you know what? We were charging them three thousand dollars, now let's start charging them percentages, they do it with CDBG. I feel like once they got their foot on the door, they started, you know, upping their ante.
They're not charging percentage, I'm sorry, these numbers I figured out. I track the performance of a consultant based on how successful they are. These are my numbers, I did those, the actual money. So he sends me this report on the grants that we actually have approval for, because if you look on this spreadsheet, you'll see administrators and contact.
Can I ask you a couple of questions that a resident has asked me?
Okay.
The first question is, will any extra charges be brought before the council prior to the project being started? So before a project starts, if there are additional fees, will you bring it before the council?
Beyond, yes, absolutely.
Okay, the second question that this resident had was, what was the total spent on Funding Scout to date, original contract plus all extras?
I can get you, I wish you'd sent me those, I have a GL, I can go track it.
Okay.
Council Chair, I think for the sake of time, I think for me to be comfortable, and I'm not sure about council members, I would like to table this, take it to a study session. Maybe we can get more explanation, maybe Wade Trim can be here and to see exactly what did we get so far, how many grants we're working on, and weigh our options between having them do it or somebody else. I don't know about other.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab, are you done?
I'm done, thank you, sir.
So I understand that we're all funding for grants, but why don't we hire an in-house grant writer?
Because of the, okay, so this is a specialty. So this is, this is a really, this is a specialty. A lot of these grant opportunity, we didn't even know existed. We didn't know if we qualified for them. So the one that was just brought in today is something called, we didn't even know existed. This is not normal, like, you know, you approach MDOT for pavement, or these are things. So this is, I didn't even know Medicaid reimbursement program passed a resolution. So the state of Michigan had a resolution called a ground emergency medical transportation program. Okay, so I didn't even know we qualify, I wasn't even.
But you're not a grant writer, you wouldn't know, you're an engineer.
No, I understand, but so, so his job is to try to match our needs with whatever is out there that we qualify for. So he's recommending approximately two fifty to five hundred thousand annually if we pursue it. So this is something that wasn't even on my radar. If I pay the fee, the stated time and material, and he can get me two fifty to five hundred annually, well, hell, that's a hell, I mean, that's.
Mr. Deeb, I have one more question, if that's okay, Mr. Saab. And this is still from the resident. Of the twenty-six million dollars they've assisted in obtaining, how much is still outstanding and not been awarded? Because we can say, hey, we reached out to get twenty-six million dollars.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't, grant awarded, we're twenty-six, six, seventy-seven, eight, one, seven, awarded. Pending is five, three, six, five, five million, three hundred sixty-five, these are awarded. But please keep in mind, when I say awarded, no one writes you a check. So just like the check you saw from the Congresswoman, this is, you know, this is, you get awarded, and there are things that you have to do. You have to go out and apply, I mean, you know, and then send report, and then verify.
You have to match, you have to match some funding?
Some of them have matches, absolutely, and some do not. Yes, and you will have to approve it, absolutely. And then most, a lot of them do have matches, but, and I'm going after the stuff that I need regardless. So if I can get fifty to seventy-five percent paid for by a grant, that means I'm saving that cost on my taxpayers, that's.
Council Chair. Yes. Thank you. You know, Wade Trim's been with us for a long time, and they've done a really good job helping out the city in many facets. Now, when they, you say that they look up these grants, so we have department heads that will also recommend a grant for them to look into a grant. What happens if they look into a grant, say, for the firefighters?
Right.
And then they start documenting their time and material, and then they don't get the grant?
This is not, that's not how it works. So what they do is they approach us, they approach us first, the administrator, Mariana, myself, or the department head, and say, look, there are these things, are you guys interested? So we look internally, find out if we have a good chance of receiving them. So far, their success rate of matching our needs to a grant have been in eighty, ninety percent. So we don't go after and waste a consultant's time if I know, and there are a couple that we turned down. We didn't even approach, we didn't even, and we don't get charged for those, we just didn't approach them. But some of the stuff that we know we qualify for, and God knows, we haven't been, we qualify for a lot because we haven't been doing that for years. So we tell them to do it, but I match them, so for the fire department, we go, I'm not, you know, I'm not the custodial of everything, so it goes to the fire. I'm working on one for the libraries. There are programs that we might actually qualify for, for the library. So we ask the department head, interested, yes or no, and then we'll go that way. So only if we have a good chance, we approach it and pay the fee.
What happens if they, they're working on it, and it's taking longer than they thought, and they were jumping through hoops? Do they report to you and say, hey, you know?
So this spreadsheet shows success, pending, and two that were denied. Out of twenty-three, we only had two that we didn't have, that were denied. So if you look at, we monitor this. I mean, I, you know, I don't want to pay fee on something. So out of all these things, these were approved, these were pending legislatures, and only two were denied.
Is it possible to put a, excuse me, to put a fee not to exceed, or something like that, or, I mean?
Maybe, maybe the way we assign the work, we can say, you know, on this, don't spend more than ten hours or something, we can consider that. But this is no different than, so time and material is a normal industry standard. You agree on rates, like you did on CDBG for our department, you have an hourly rate, and you agree on that, but that's all they can bill. Maybe if you, if you like, we can, for each assignment, give them, that will be more work on our staff, and say that for this assignment, I don't want you to go beyond twenty hours or so, we can do that.
Council Chair.
All right, guys, we're spending a lot of time on this, I don't want to sit, so I'm going to let you go, Councilman.
Just, Mr. Deeb, because only they doubled the fee right now, the initial fee, plus, like I said, the grant writing is like open-ended. So how come they change all the?
They didn't double the fee, what they did is they added services, we asked them to add services. And the reason we did that is because I don't have any support staff. So if you look at, you do the application, all right? So we got approved. Now the next step is, I'm the administrator, I'm the actual contact person, and Mariana is providing the support. But we don't have staff to do the progress reports, to do the meeting with the state. And we, they do a lot of meetings, and these things are back and forth. You know, we need you to do, and there's a couple resolutions, I think, on eleven A and B, and earlier there was a question from the audience, that's an example of what the state changes. So now they wanted you to separate, and I know you approved those things, the CDBGDR, but now they're, they said, okay, well, now we have a new administrator, the old guy retired. Now he wants a separate resolution from you for each one, as opposed to one resolution.
Mr. Deeb, let me tell you, if that's all right, Councilman, let me tell you the issue here that we're going to have.
Yes, sir.
We're going to approve this, okay? And then these fees can be as high as God knows how long, and the council has no ideas, because we approved it, and it's nothing in here or in their contract says you are going to come before council before any other fee. What if the fee's ten thousand dollars? What if the fee's a million dollars?
You put.
We just blindly approved this.
You have a ninety-six thousand total, if you add the two GLs, you have a ninety-six. I can't go a dollar more without coming to you. So you have that in the council.
No, we're talking about the other services.
Yeah, the, again, if that goes beyond, I will come to you.
We don't know that, though.
Put that in the, put that in the.
What's that, Councilwoman?
I think we need a study session, we're discussing this way too much for just an agenda item.
Yeah.
Put that in the motion.
Mariana, please make it brief, I want to wrap this up.
It's brief, so as we have done this current two years, every time that we have a new grant that we apply for, they send us an invoice, and it's typically over the one thousand five hundred dollars, and all of those have come to you in claims. So you have seen and approved every single application that has gone beyond the original ninety-six thousand contract. So that's typically how you see it. Again, you can approve or deny, and if you deny it, then we don't pay it. But that is how we have been showing it to the council in the past. If you want to change that, we can discuss that further. But just to clarify, again, no penny spent without your approval. It may not be in the contract itself, but it does come in claims as the grants come up.
Are you sure you were able to share this, whatever your, the sheet you were sharing? I mean, if you guys shared stuff with us, it would be easier for us to make decisions.
We shared that with you two weeks ago, and we asked if there were any questions.
I mean, it could have been easier with this motion, to see exactly.
It wasn't in this motion.
It wasn't ready at the time, yeah.
I'll be happy to email it to everyone, it's, I'll help, I'll mail it.
Okay, guys, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, any other discussion? Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constance, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
No.
Hassan Ahmad.
No.
Nancy Breyer.
Yes.
Robert Constance.
Yes.
Hassan Saab.
No.
Tom Wenzel.
Yes.
Mobe do.
No.
Thank you.
Motion defeated.
Next up, we have alley, I think it's placed in vacating, request Ford Road between Berwyn and Norborn.
Council Chair.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve of the alley vacation for the alley of Ford Road between Berwyn and Norborn. If approved, utility easement will be part of the closure as outlined in eight dash B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? This is long overdue, I know I went ahead and I visited Al Said Meets the other day. This is something that they have requested for quite some time. We spoke, her and I, and briefly with Ali as well, and, you know, I brought it up with Mr. Deeb. Mr. Deeb brought it before us. I know I asked the clerk, I thought we had already voted on this, but, you know, with all the recognition and everything going on, hopefully this passes. I see it passing unanimously, I think Mr. Deeb has said many times, give away the alley, give away the alleys. And so here we are, we're giving this alley over to business owners if this gets passed today, which is basically no longer on the residents and the taxpayers, it'll be on the landlords and those who own those buildings.
Council Chair, I think it's one down, many to go, hopefully we can work on the others, like alleys.
Yes.
And congratulations to Al Said Meat Market, I guess two and one today, recognition and an alley.
Well, let's take this to a vote, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, congratulations, guys. Next up, we have open fiber metro act permit extension.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Moved that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the metro act permit extension for open fiber and authorized the mayor and clerk to sign this document as outlined in E C. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, we have Council Chair Bedu and policy regarding public comments at city council meeting.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Moved that Dearborn Heights City Council changed the agenda, add the following, add the following section. Members of the public, A, comments from council members, B, announcements, C, public comments.
Yeah, Council Chair, I'm sorry, Councilman, it's Councilman Wenzel's motion, so I think.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it's fine, he can read it, yeah. I was going to say there was a mistake, because this was my motion that I put in, but go ahead, Councilman Saab.
If this motion passes, it could give council and the public the opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting and again at the end of the meeting, and will take effect immediately as of the meeting, as of this meeting, October eighth, two thousand twenty-four, is outlined in nine C.
A motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman.
It's outlined in nine A.
Nine A. Yeah, didn't I say that?
No.
You said nine C. Oh, I'm sorry. Nine A.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell. Or Councilman Wenzel?
That's Councilman Wenzel's support.
Okay, I waited, and you said it, sorry. Thank you for that. I know this is something that Councilman Wenzel brought up last meeting, but this was also something I had emailed the clerk with a couple of weeks before that, and we were requesting to put this on, because it was Councilman Ahmad, I think all the council members here have said. So I don't want to take any recognition for this, and I believe Clerk Linsenyah Minu spoke, and I said, please make sure that Councilman Wenzel's on this resolution as well, because when watching the meeting, he brought it up. There were just a few things that I would not agree with, that I didn't add to this, was that we are going to allow to hear from the residents on every single agenda item, and being able to stop the meeting, hear from them, and let them comment on every single thing while we're going. I think that would have been a little too much. These meetings are supposed to be strictly business. And it's, you know, you want to give, you want to give an opinion or have a public comment for three minutes, move it on the front and speak at the end? By all means, let's go ahead and do that.
Council chair?
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, so they're allowed to speak in the beginning on agenda items or anything they want to say? And they have, they have two minutes still?
They have, they're gonna have three minutes.
So they have three minutes in the beginning and three minutes at the end if they still wish to?
Yeah, because, I mean, you look, at the end of the day, you're no longer gonna need agenda item. You can speak on agenda item to your public comments.
So three minutes for both, talking on the, you know, discussing agenda item or saying whatever they want to say?
Or are you saying, Madam Clerk, are we doing public comments, agenda items, start the meeting, and then go back to council members, and then public comments again?
Council chair?
Yeah.
Yeah. Council chair, in this motion, it says it'd be effective this meeting, and obviously it won't, because we, we were planning on putting it ahead of, right after the approval of the agenda. But, so just to make things easy, we decided to keep it at 9A in order and start this, this new procedure at our next meeting. And what it is, is you would, you would comment, it wouldn't say comment on agenda items, you could comment on anything. And at the beginning, you can make announcements through the, the directors or someone, or, or the comments from council members. Because a lot of times, like Councilwoman Briar has really important things to say about meetings. It takes place at the end of the meeting where a lot of people have left, and they turn their TVs off or their, so it's important that things like this be said at the beginning of the meeting. And then allow the, allow public comment at the end of the meeting, because things might happen during the meeting that they want to comment on, that they didn't know about at the beginning.
So you have in the front and at the end?
Front and the back, yeah.
Okay, you got it.
Council chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go ahead with the, the motion, are we going to have times for the?
Yes.
Okay. So you have to let us know what time at the beginning and what time at the end.
I think, I think we're just gonna match what's in the front and what's, we're gonna match what's in the back. I think that's fair.
But it, put the front one during comments on agenda items, right? In that, in that place, right? Wherever the comment on agenda items is, or the minutes?
So we're not gonna do public comments on agenda items anymore? We're just gonna do public comments and they can?
Yeah.
Okay.
Agenda item slash comment, whatever they want to say. Okay, so I would say give them three minutes, but not, they cannot come up twice, one time, three minutes, say whatever they want to say, agenda items.
But if they want to come back at the end and public comment, they can as well. So a resident will have two turns, once in the beginning and once at the end. But what they won't be able to do is be able to speak in between everything. I also think in the beginning, we should be able to allow first two minutes. I don't think you need to allow three minutes.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, three minutes might be a little too excessive, you know, which is a great thing. Thank you, two minutes.
So two minutes at the beginning?
Yes, three minutes at the end.
And three minutes at the end, okay.
All right, let's wrap this up. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up? Next up, we have 9B Clerk Senia Institution of Responsive Government Grant.
Council chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive, know and file the 30,000 grand that was awarded from the Institute of Responsive Government, a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization, tax-exempt, under Internal Revenue Code, IRC, Section 501(c)(3). The grant funds must be used exclusively for the nonpartisan public purpose of planning and operationalization, secure, efficient, and accessible election administration. The grant's term is June 1, 2024, through May 31, 2025. In addition, authorize the controller to set up or modify the appropriate general ledger accounts to accept the grant and provide expenditure as outlined in 9-B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on that?
Council chair?
Yes, sir.
Can we have the clerk give us, what, what do you plan on doing with this money?
Just in the beginning, okay? 30,000 really doesn't come, go a long, lot way. But our equipment, our tabulators that go out to each precinct, I think were purchased in 2017. And so we're looking at those, those are 6,000 apiece. We have 27 precincts right now.
Wow.
Also, with Deputy Clerk Faman and I have been discussing was, we really need new handicap booths. And you can get those where there, we've talked to, I've talked to other clerks, and it's like a four, four booths, which would be three regular and one handicap. Those are 1,000 apiece. So we really haven't, we're trying, we're, once the presidential election is over, then November 5 election is all dirt, well, we'll look more into it. So we have a little ways to.
You need a lot more money than that.
Oh, yeah.
$162,000 just for the tablets.
Yeah. I mean, I'll take your word for it. But, so those are our ideas right now, and those are big-ticket items.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in.
I'd just like to make a comment. Lynn is out there doing everything she can to make sure we have the best election possible.
Applause to Lynn, huh? Let it be known, we have the best clerk in the country. I promise you guys that. She's so good, she even got Dr. Musall in her seat.
I mean, I did approve his, I didn't vote for him, you know? That was a very good, very good decision.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? We can never get our ayes right, huh? Motion carries. 9C removed.
9D. Yeah, 9D.
Council chair?
Yeah, you're right, 9D.
9C is removed. Next up, we have 9D Brownfield Administrator Roscoe, 2024-2025, proposal Bloom, Brownsfield Redevelopment Authority Budget.
Council chair?
Councilwoman Briar?
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the 24 to 2025 proposed Brownfield budget adopted by the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board on 18, I'm sorry, August 14, 2024, as outlined in 9D.
Support.
Motion made by Councilwoman Briar, seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell. Any discussion on that?
Council chair?
Yes, sir.
Tom Roscoe, he's, he's doing a fantastic job with, with the Tifa money that we receive. A lot of people don't even know what he does and where this money goes. I mean, we have one ordinance officer that is funded, you know, a lot through the Tifa and in the Tifa areas. And help, helping out with every building that the city owns in the Tifa area. I mean, he, he's doing a fantastic job, and he's, he's a, he doesn't want any credit, I know that, and he's kind of blushing right now. But Tom, you're doing a great job, and keep it up, you're an asset to our community.
Thank you, Tom, we appreciate you, we fully support you. Any other discussion? Thank you, councilman. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Comptroller Shepherd, annual financial audit and a single audit engagement letter renewal.
Council chair?
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve of the one-year renewal option on the contract with Alan C. Young and Associates PC. For the City of Dearborn Heights Annual Financial Audit and Single Audit, and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller to sign the necessary warrants and authorize the treasurer to issue payment from GL account 101-223817000, as outlined in 9E.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Briar. I will start off the discussion on this. I know this was something that I asked to be tabled and be removed. I actually met with, or not met, but got on a Zoom call with Alan C. Young and Associates. I actually spoke with the partners. I was also accompanied with our, our honorable comptroller. I, I shared and expressed myself. They have given me their one, they've given the City of Dearborn Heights their 100% full commitment and support. They've even acknowledged that they should be reaching out to the separate entities. And, you know, a lot of these, you know, companies forget the fact that the administration is an entity, and this body is a completely different entity. I said, so sometimes when you're speaking to the administration, we have no idea, and then, you know, we start asking questions, and like, oh, well, we told the administration. Well, you didn't, you know, that, that information didn't come before us. So I spoke with Alan C. Young and, and his, his members, and I was really frank, to be hon, to be frank with you guys, I, I really enjoyed the conversation. We talked for a little bit over an hour. And, and they've assured us that, hey, they're gonna give us their 100%. And they're not as big as they, you know, we really thought that they were, that they are a small mom and pop shop, and Dearborn Heights is extremely important to them. So I, I want you to know, I was, they were able to change my mind, you know, at the end of the day, if you guys want to stand however you guys stand. But I can tell you right now, I felt very, very comfortable after that meeting.
Council chair?
Councilman Saab.
Kind of feel that they can be honest with you, say what they want, but when it came down to the budget and the audits, I think they failed, not us, they failed the whole city. And then anybody coming in for a new contract can tell you, hey, we're gonna give you 100%. Or your tragic commitment.
We're just renewing, we're paying the second part. We've already approved this contract from two years ago.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not happy with them.
Any other discussion?
Council chair, I mean, I'm sorry I missed that meeting, but I, I trust your judgment, and I think it's too late in the game now to go out for bidding. So I would say, let's go ahead and approve this. And this is gonna give us another year just to make sure if they're gonna do a good job, and, because I'm pretty sure they want to keep, you know, doing business with the city.
And look, they felt the pressure. I will tell you guys that, 100%, they felt the pressure, and we were able to do our part. Please, guys, nothing from the audience, please. I'm gonna have to ask you to leave if you do it again. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
And clerk, please take roll call.
Nancy Bri, Nancy Briar?
Yes.
Robert Constance?
No.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Mobey Dun?
Yes.
Tom?
You have to right now.
Okay, motion carries for two.
Thank you. Next up, we have IT, 9F, IT Director Cooper, Managed Detection and Response with Security Awareness Training.
Council chair?
Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of the two-year upgrade to manage detection and response with the potential need of hardware, D O tokens, and security awareness training from B A E Network. For monthly cost based on $15 per workstation server per month, plus $50 per firewall per month, plus $442 per month for security awareness training. With the cost of hardware, D O tokens not to exceed an initial cost of $14,913, and an onboarding cost of $299. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary documents, and the treasurer to issue payment from account 101-258-728001, as outlined in 9-F.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on this?
Council chair?
Yes.
I, I had a conversation with Director Cooper today. This is something I think we need in the city for, probably he can explain it better, but for security purposes, for all the computers, and like the cyber, what do you call it again, cyber? Cybersecurity. So this is something that we need, the way it's structured here, because it depends how many computers we have to install the software on. So I think this is something that we need to move forward with, to protect our city and our information.
Please, a quick one-minute synopsis on this. This is actually multifaceted cybersecurity. This is our multi-factor authentication. That is a need for us. This is our managed monitoring of our systems, so that if it does detect a intrusion, if it does detect a potential cybersecurity threat, the proper people can get notified, and we can take advantage of it. This is a very proactive response to protect our data of the residents, to be frank with it. This, being proactive is much cheaper than being reactive.
So have we felt like we've been somewhat in jeopardy or being breached at any point since you've been here?
I can tell you that one particular county has been compromised. Literally last week, the county, Wayne County, was compromised. This is not something you want to wait to react on, you know, with it, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Council chair?
Councilman, can we make it quick?
Yeah, well, I got Director Cooper up there. You said, you know, the, the monitoring, monitor the equipment. My laptop here and any iPad or something that, say, the ordinance offer has, is that all, anything that goes through these, are they monitored?
The antivirus malware software that we use, right now, we currently have a kind of a baseline package with this. This will increase our package, which, which will start to help detect.
Well, yeah, my, my question is, any email I send or any kind of conversation I have on my laptop?
That's different, sir.
No, I'm saying, I'm asking you a question. Is, is that monitored?
Yes. Do I monitor your emails or not?
No, no, is it monitored? Is it, can anybody, can somebody, and I'll ask you who, who, who has, who has access to my laptop, all the information that I have on my laptop here, and all these people, and any laptop and computer in the city? Is, is?
The Sentinel, the Sentinel One does not monitor the contents of like, of an email or, it's monitoring your login, you know, access for it.
Can it be read? Can it be read?
Yes. Well, technically, all the emails are, are stored, yes. As of right now, I'm the only one that has access to that. This system does not go into that.
But you need the permission from the mayor in order to approve anything that's sent.
Yeah, because it document, again, it documents every time I would even go in to look at it, so.
Why, why, why do you have access to all that information?
Somebody has to.
I mean, if I communicate with Councilwoman Maxwell, so you can, you can read my emails?
Everything is stored. This is.
Can I have access to all that?
Point of order, please.
No, can, can I have access to all that information, please?
Through a foyer, yeah.
Oh, I know, why? Do you foyer store?
He doesn't need a foyer.
I don't, I don't go into it and, and look at it, sir. I, I don't sit there and say, hey, I'm bored, let me go and look at an email.
Hang on, one second. The councilman's question is, do you have the capabilities of being able to see what comes in and out? That's not asking if you would do it. Do you have those capabilities?
Yes.
Who else has those capabilities?
Nobody.
Okay. But you sent an email the other day about, to the treasurer, saying that without the mayor's approval, she's not allowed to email the entire thing without his approval. So now, throughout that foyer, your boss, who you work for the City of Dearborn Heights, is making the decision, whether she can email everybody in the city now, or she has to single-handedly choose them all. Which you can also have the capability of stopping or refraining from happening, correct?
A, a, a monitored distribution list, okay, was set up so that not anybody, a disgruntled employer or anything, can just email the whole entire staff. That is a pretty common practice.
I don't think this council is gonna be doing anything, or any elected official can do anything disgruntled. And I think if, at the very least, the residents have already chosen every single person that has been elected here, not you and not the mayor. It's, those decisions are not made by you or, or Bill Bazey. Those decisions were made by the taxpayers and the residents of Dearborn Heights. And what's happening here is, what I'm seeing is more of, of, more of dictatorship is what I'm seeing. And I'm gonna tell you right now, when I read that email, I had something written very ugly and nasty, especially with everything that was going on, but I said I was being too emotional. I want you to know what the councilman is saying right now, 100% is illegal. And if you think it's not, and I'm not, I don't care what corporation Councilor is gonna say, I've already contacted someone from Lansing, and they said, 100%, the decision should not be made by you or the administration to freaking email anybody in the city. Because I'm gonna tell you, when the budget was happening, an email was sent out to the mayor, to the entire city, of every, of every employee. You know what I had to do to respond and rebuttal what the mayor said? Because the information that it was giving was not truthful and it wasn't honest? I had to email every single person one by one, because you stripped that away from me as an elected official. You don't have that authority. So I'm gonna tell you, you either give that, you either give that authority back to every elected official in the city, or I'm gonna put a resolution to go out, and we're gonna fund out, and we're gonna, we're gonna find a new IT department that's gonna be outsourced, so it's not being dictated by the administration. Because at the end of the day, nobody makes the decisions for this council, this clerk or the, or the treasurer or the clerk. And that's what's happening right now. You told us in an email that the mayor had to approve what the treasurer emailed to, to the employees in the city. That's not up to you and the mayor.
Council chair?
Hang on one second, I'll, I'll answer, I'll answer you in a second.
When you're dumb, it's informing.
So I just want you to know, you should have at least come before the council and said, would you guys allow the mayor to be the person that makes that final decision? But instead, you gave that authority to the mayor and said, she can't voice her opinion to everybody. But nothing is disgruntled from what she said in that email. But instead, you determined it was disgruntled based on the discretion of the mayor. That's unfair, and that's not right, and I know you know that's not all right. Go ahead, mayor.
When, when an email is sent, it's gonna give misinformation to the employees, it is my job to make sure the email is legit before it goes to all the employees. The email.
Hang on, guys, point of order, nothing from the audience. Please, nothing from the audience, please.
I think he's got a PPO not to sit, not to come.
Mayor, forget about it, that's okay.
No, I understand, but there's something with the Wayne County prosecutor from being here. Anyway.
Hey, point of order, please, please.
Mayor, point of order, please, let's not discuss that.
But anyway, there's a police report. But anyway, with that, when there's misinformation, it's gonna go to all the employees. it's going to go to all the employees. I have to make sure, my job to make sure all the emails are accurate and correct. There was an email that was going to be sent to the, to the employees, to all the employees, and I just wanted to make sure that the employees have the facts, that's it.
But mayor, I want you to know, that's not your authority to make.
It, it is when you go through all the city employees.
Then you know what my authority we're going to make? Hang on, then the authority I'm going to make is come next Tuesday at the next city council meeting, I'm going to put a resolution to defund the I T department for the city, and we're going to go out for business, we're going to have, we're going to outsource it, and so that we're not making the dictatorship between you or this council. Clearly, there's a separation here, right here. And, and I'm not, what I'm seeing here is that you're going to make the final decision, whether if I can say something to the, to the employees, or if the clerk can say, or if the treasurer can. And really, that's unfair. Roger, please, point of order, I, I don't want to get into the discussion on it. The mayor has his, uh, thoughts on it. I think this council, including the clerk and the treasurer, please, ma'am, uh, have their own discretion on it. I don't need you to defend and go back and forth with me on it, please, Roger.
Council chair, no disrespect to you.
Roger, please, let's just not go back and forth.
I'm just asking you, council chair, could you kindly put it in a written format so I can see exactly what you're talking about and what you're referencing, and we can look, and you can get an opinion, and I can get an opinion? Because what we didn't want to do is have certain information, like our forfeiture monies which come under different statutes passed out or circulated. And I think that if you put it in writing, that'll give us all a chance to look at it and give transparency. Council, council chair, I was just speaking.
You spoke without even my permission, so.
I thought, I, well, I thought you said point of, gave me permission.
Yeah, no, I, I.
In any case, I can speak, appoint to charter when I see an issue that comes up.
To the, to the chair's permission, Roger.
So I'm just speaking that how we need to make sure, put it in writing, and then there's no favoritism, there's total transparency, and then a written opinion can be disseminated to all the parties.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Lord. Thank you. I just want you to know. Lisa, go ahead, I'll give you thirty seconds on this.
Now I can do it, it doesn't matter.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have to. Okay. Because that email, I'll do respect to the mayor, you talked about misinformation. It was a policy. It was a policy change that needed to go to all the city, uh, the city employees, based on a conversation that Plant Moran and I had, that we agreed to change the policy, existing city policy on cashing personal checks for employees. We decided no longer to do that. It had been done for years and years and years. We decide, we decided, Plant Moran and I had agreed to that. They recommended, and I agreed, to send out the memorandum, which I did. That's what you saw attached to that, while you probably didn't see the email, because it was inter, you know, intervened to not warrant, it didn't need to go out or didn't want it to go out, but then you turned around and sent your own email about it out. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Well.
Thank you. All right, this is completely off the topic grid, but, uh, you know, we're talking about this, I just wanted to get that off my chest after reading that email. Uh, and then I know the councilman brought it up, so I just wanted to, you know, really say my part, councilman, once, I'm sorry that I.
That's fine. That's fine. Council chair, I'm sorry, but do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
But all, for all fairness, I mean, it's not Director Cooper, it's basically his, his following requests and orders, so it's not him, but whether we send an email by email or we send to the whole, all employees at the same time, they're still going to get the message. So it doesn't make sense, and for, for the mayor to sit here and monitor every single email that goes out, no, that's not, to be honest with you, with all respect, that's not his job. The job is to take care of the city and move the city forward, instead of slowing the city down and sitting down and monitoring emails, that's spirit, to be honest with you. This is really, I don't know what else to say, but this is sickening at this point, that we have to sit here at the council meeting and discuss that the mayor of the city is sitting down and looking at, at emails.
Council chair.
Yes, mayor.
Again, that's misinformation. There was an email that was sent to me to approve that one email. I don't have time, excuse me, point of order. Put your councilman check, please.
Come on.
So I can tell you, council chair.
Do your job. Point of order, guys, come on, let's wrap this up.
If we're going to run this, I don't need to speak, uh, you guys.
No, you got to stop.
This is enough, I mean, this is ridiculous.
Go ahead.
Okay, I got an email to rec, to send it to all staff, and it was a misinformation. Somebody was cashing checks. All I asked a question, and, you know, you guys put it out there, let's speak about it. Okay, there was checks, I have no idea who was cashing checks, personal checks that the city was accepting. And actually, I'm, I'm, I'm going to send that one, another case to state police to look into, because when you have actually checks, you're writing a check for the city, if you guys think it's a joke, you, you think it's funny? You, if, no, seriously, you guys think it's a joke, you got a few councilmen laughing, how do you know what checks, if you write a check, anybody writes a check and goes to cashier, at the cashier, how do you know if that cash, that that check actually cleared? How do you know which account that check is coming out of? That's all I wanted to do, is I wanted to make sure that there was a process in place. That's what my concern, I wanted to make sure, if you take a check, if you cash a check, you put a, you take a check, maybe it's from the water fund, which we know that's illegal, right? So that's the thing, I had no idea, I, I needed the information, and there was a misinformation email that was sent out, and I wanted to make sure we get it cleared before we send an email to all the employees. When I sent an email, who is cashing the check? There's only one person. If only one person is cashing checks, then why are you sending it to all the employees? That was my question.
Mayor, so I, please stop, guys, and I'm just going to, we're going to end this here. Mayor, the email, her response was letting all of the employees know, so in the past, for those at home are watching, in the past, before this treasurer, before even our former treasurer, employees, when they got their check, before they got direct deposit, they were able to cash it in with the city.
Not.
Okay, so, hang on.
Personal check.
One second, mayor, please. I totally agree with the mayor, you should not be able to do that, and I think Plant Moran and the treasurer both also agreed, you guys were both saying the same thing, and so all the treasurer was doing was sending an email on what you were saying, you're no longer allowed to do this anymore, and you stopped it. Now, I'm not going to go back and forth into this discussion, I want you to know something, Mr. Cooper, I'm very disappointed at the fact that you're stopping us and from the council or any elected official for that matter, be able to send out an email. We're still going to get our message out, rather you say we can do it all at once, if I have to reach out to the clerk and say, let's do it single-handedly, one by one. Uh, because it doesn't make a difference, I just think that's a little petty, micromanaging, and it shouldn't be happening. Uh, without any further discussion on this.
Can I do, I'm sorry, council chair.
Quickly, please.
I just want to let you know that the clerk's office does have access to two different state programs, and both of them have the multi-factor.
Thank you.
Both of them have the motion.
Thank you.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have I T Director Cooper purchase and payment of Mitel upgrades and repairs.
Mitel.
Mitel.
Council chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of Mitel Systems upgrades, removal of the need of P O T S lines and training from B B, B S B Communications for a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account number one oh one, two five eight, seven two eight, zero zero one, for fifteen thousand, three hundred and four dollars and thirty-eight cents, and account one oh one, two five eight, nine three two, zero zero zero, for thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty cents, as outlined in nine G.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have I T Director Cooper updates, or P D K, I'm sorry, I T Director Cooper P D K update.
Council chair. Yep. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council to approve the purchase and payment of P D K updates and integration from V A E Network for a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account one oh one, two five eight, nine three two, zero zero zero, as outlined in nine dash H.
I apologize for interrupting rudely. Should we be giving out account numbers in public? I, I don't.
Yeah, we always have.
Is that a process?
You can give, on a check, there's an account number.
Okay, I didn't want it maybe giving to the public, it'd be.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Um, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. As you see here, Mr. Cooper, you've gotten the support unanimously of this council and this body, let's hope it can be a two-way street for us, please. Thank you.
Yeah.
Next up, we have nine ayes being removed. We have nine J Police Chiefs will purchase and payment of flock safety cameras.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
Move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the payment for twenty additional flock cameras, originally approved by City Council, motion twenty-four dash three three three. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller to sign the warrant, expand this payment in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars to be paid out of the forfeiture account, two six five dash three three zero dash eight three one two six five, and authorize the treasurer to pay from account, from this account as outlined in nine J.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Uh, I will start the discussion by saying thank you to Chief Swope, thank you to Councilman Saab. Uh, Councilman Saab, actually, this was his initial, uh, uh, you know, resolution, he brought it before this council, and then Chief Swope here brought it before this body, so you can see we're all here working together. And this is just another, uh, pivotal point to letting you guys know that the council is not here to defund anything in the police department. We just want to write, you know, write proper policy and procedure coming from the council, we'll even help out the police department, because we love and support our police officers.
Council chair.
Yes, sir, councilman, once.
The hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, that's to purchase and install these cameras?
I believe so, yes.
What about monitoring? Is there an additional cost for monitoring these?
Yes. Well, that, I think they would have to come with a program first, and that would come before us as well.
No, that's part of the contract. Go ahead, chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
So, um, we already have the program to monitor the, um, the license plates that come across the system, so we already have that. Um, so these cameras would be just addition to, uh, the cameras we currently have, so we're just getting more data from them, and we already have the system to, to read, um, the data that we receive.
Is there, is there a person that monitors the monitoring?
Um, yeah, so like, uh, so our officers, um, get hits on, on license plates, and they're able to monitor, um, the, the cameras. Um, so in regards to monitoring, are you talking about audits? Audits of, of, of information? So anytime there's any type of inappropriate use, we, we conduct investigations. Um, we also do spot checks of how officers are, you know, performing their duties and making sure that they're operating things appropriately. Um, our officers are trained annually on, uh, security awareness, and they, you know, they know what they can and cannot do. Anything that's brought to our attention, saying that they're not doing it properly, then, you know, we'll have to deal with that.
Is this one hundred percent automated, where there's no person entering data or looking at data, it's just available for the officers to look at?
Yeah, that's correct. So, um, the, the camera picks up, let's say, a license plate, um, and it just, uh, if, if that license plate had previously been reported stolen or wanted, or maybe a missing person, um, is attached to that license plate, it will, um, send a notification to the system, and the system will send like a, an alert to, you know, the computer for the police car, um, or to a, um, an application on, on a, you know, a phone or wherever the application is installed. Um, and then the officer will then be able to see where that car is.
So this system is integrated in many cities and areas of how?
Oh, yes, oh, yeah. Um, most cities have this flock system, um, right now, so I know all the local cities around us have it. I'm not sure about Inkster, um, but, you know, Garden City, Westland, Dearborn, um, and there's a lot of them. So it's great information, because we share information with other cities as well.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have nine K Police Chief's full patrol budget amendment.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'll make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the amendment to the police department salaries, fringe benefit accounts to allow for the hiring of ten additional police officers. By one, adjusting the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five patrol officer budgetary stat maximum from forty-five employees to fifty-five employees. Two, amending the police salaries budget, one oh one dash three hundred dash seven oh six, uh, dot, 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 zero, 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 by transferring seven hundred and five thousand dollars into the account which will fund the ten additional police officer positions. Three, amending the police department fringe benefit account, one hundred dash three hundred dash seven two six, uh, dot, zero, 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 by transferring six hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred dollars and thirty cents into the account to cover the fringe benefits for the additional patrol officers. In addition, authorize the comptroller to amend the budget general ledger accounts accordingly as outlined in nine K.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant.
Council chair.
Any discussion?
Yes. So Chief, uh, Chief Swope, we said that we would, uh, definitely approve any police, um, police officers to come here, but where's this money coming from?
And, and that's, that's exactly what I'm here for, right? So we, we know we need the police officers in the city. Um, we know that, you know, at budget time, you know, we talked to, uh, talked to council, and, um, you stated, you know, we need more police officers, we, you know, we need the money to hire more police officers. Um, we have no more money in our budget, um, for police officers. If I did, I, I'd find a way to, to hire these, these, these officers. Um, you know, I spoke with the patrol union, um, you know, President Snare, who stated that he also had conversations with, with members of council about, um, you know, if they need anything, need police officers, that, that, you know, we would come up with a way together, right, to find a way, um, to, to hire these officers. So with that, with that being said, um, I, I think that, uh, you know, we're going to take you up on, on, on your word, on how we can come up with that money to, to hire these officers, so we can, you know, provide a great level of service to, to the community.
A second. Uh, Chen, my chance, is there any money available in any account that we can move around to amend, setting?
While she's getting up, my question, chief, is one hundred percent, like I said here, we one hundred percent, you know this, because we've sat down, and you have debunked anything that anybody has said that the council is trying to defund the police, because me and you sat in a room and you said, I know that that's not what you guys are doing. Um, but there's two things here that I have questions on. First, before, uh, you know, we hear from our comptroller, um, we will support you. You tell us where we're going to get it from, and we will support that. But we can't just magically think of, you know, where we're going to bring it or say to us, I want you guys to approve it, and you guys have to figure out where it's coming from. We don't, we don't have those numbers. But as the police chief, just like you broke down on how to be able to get those civilian positions, break down on how to get these ten positions, and if it makes sense, we're going to have ten more police officers.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, you know, that's, that's fine. Um, you know, it's, uh, it's one of those things where there's only so much money, right? And I, I'm sure you guys understand that as well, right?
Yeah, but I don't want anybody to look at this today and say, well, look, the council did it again, they, you know, they couldn't find the money, so they, you know, they blame, they start pointing the finger, and I don't want that to happen on record.
Yeah, I can't stop people.
We both know that that's not happening here today.
Yeah, so I can't stop people from thinking what they want to think or what they do think, but what I can do is, is, um, come up here and ask for something that the police department needs respectfully. Um, if you guys can't, um, obviously, you know, allow that to happen just because it can't happen, I understand that as well.
Thank you.
But I do want, um, everyone to know that, you know, I care for the city, I care for the police department, and I, I appreciate the relationships I've built here. Um, and, you know, I will continue to find ways to pay for these police officers if I can do so. Um, if anyone has any ideas, I know the councils, you know, you guys, you guys are financial experts, you guys have been doing this a long time. So I will take any suggestions that you might have, do the fact that you have seen other, or, other areas of our budget to where maybe we can recapture some of that. But, um, it's, uh, you know, public safety is a big deal to me and I'm sure to everyone in the room. And I would love to provide services such as, you know, um, and traffic bureau officers, community police officers, and additional patrolmen, um, for, you know, the, the chefs themselves. So, um, you know, I understand if, if that's not something we can do right now, um, but I did want to take you up on your offer to come here and have the conversation.
Oh, we, and, and, and I thank you for bringing it and we're going to ask our controller right behind you there for a minute if there's any money in the budget available that if not 10, if we can put, um, two, three officers in to start off with that.
So any additional money would have to come from fund balance?
So there's no money allocated anywhere else in the city right now other than fund balance?
It's allocated already to certain line items. So you can move things within the police department. That'll be up to you guys to decide what you wanted to do, but it, it's a net zero. You're not gaining any money to, to pay for this.
Council Chair.
Unless it comes from fund balance.
Yeah.
Thank you, Council, yeah, thank you, Council Chair. Well, obviously, we all agree that we need more police officers, but the issue here is having the money. And since I think this is, we cannot vote on this today. We need to table it or take it, send it back to the administration, have the administration work on it or take it to a study session, we'll have, give the controller more time, uh, to think about it or to look into it with the chief, with the administration at the study session, because we're talking almost 1.5 million dollars here. It's not, we're not talking change.
It's actually a bit less than that because, you know, we're, we're almost a quarter into the new budget.
Well, this is, this is for 10 officers, you need, I mean.
Right, but the, but the numbers, uh, the numbers here, and, and these are, you, you, uh, you salary these out like lateral positions, right?
Yeah, so this is salaried right, uh, in the middle, right? So right in the middle, so not the, not the cheapest at 60, but not the most expensive at 81.
This is, this is patrol officers, not command, so.
No, no, right.
Council Chair.
Yeah. Okay, guys, chief, are all the positions in the police department that were budgeted for filled?
Yeah, so we have 43 filled and we have two in background. And then we have four additional on a list, um, after those two in background. So, um, we obviously aren't going to be able to get to those four, but, um, the two that are on background will put us at our 45 total.
Now, that's what was budgeted for, 45?
That is correct.
Uh, why don't we do this, George? Can you get us onto a Tuesday? Chiefs, you think by next Tuesday you can come up with something so that you can get us to know between you and the controller where this money can come from so that way we can help support this?
I, I, I'll definitely do my best to, you know, come up with as much as we possibly can to, um, to close the gap.
We're all saying, we all want to be on the same page, but we also want to make sure, like, I don't, I'm not the police chief to operate the budget for the police chief.
Yeah.
I made that very clear, we have, we, we.
Well, I understand that, but, but what I, what I, what I would like to say is, and I didn't mean to cut you off, um, but, you know, I was given a budget, right? Um, I was told I had to operate within the budget, which is perfectly fine, that's how we're supposed to do things. But then I was told, if you need something, come ask. So we're here asking. And now it's back on me to find the money when there is no money.
Yeah, hold on, yeah, chief, hold on. Look, I'm going to tell you right now exactly how I feel and I don't want to get into the, I don't want to get into this shouting match with you, but what I'm going to tell you is right now is, uh, what you're asking here right now is saying, we want some 150,000 dollars, you guys are the experts, you guys are the ones that know everything about the budget, figure it out, and if not, you guys turned it down. Because that's what it seems like you're doing with us right now.
What I said is.
What we're going to do is.
You asked me to come back.
You're the police chief.
Right.
Come up with the budget, how many more, this is just, you were able to do it for the three civilian positions and they were great and we supported it. We had grants coming in for the Ford Road issue tickets, you broke down everything and how we're going to be able to fund it. Unanimously, you were supported. Help us do the same thing here.
Okay.
Thank you, and then we'll support this openly unanimously.
Council Chair, just, just for the record, um, we didn't give you a budget, we were proposed a budget and we approved the budget, your police, the, the chief proposed to us. We don't make the budget, the budget's proposed to council and the budget, they said it was 45 police officers, it was budgeted for that officer. And again, for the record, I put, this year's budget was the highest police budget ever approved in the city with less officers. And if Shannon, we can come out where if there's any money available in the city that we could, maybe, I mean, 10 officers, I'd love to have 20, but if there's money that we can move around to hire, the more the merrier. But I mean, anything that usually comes in front of us that needs to be, uh, amended, there's usually a GL account that it's coming from or where it's getting moved from. We just can't write up blank checks. So if we can come up with anything, if it's not 10 officers, if it's five officers, three officers that we can move together on, on a, on a study session, we're on for it.
Okay, yeah, I was just confused because I think last meeting it was mentioned, um, by, by one of the council members.
Me, myself.
That we had a million dollar resolution coming for the police department. I could have sworn it's.
No, not the resolution, no.
Okay, it was something different, okay.
No, I said, bring, if you want officers, bring the budget to amend, I didn't say nothing about it.
All right, confusion there.
Million dollars.
Okay, I think that's where we're, I think that's where the confusion is, maybe, um, one of us misinterpreted what was said, so.
We never said anything about a million dollars.
Was this, uh, chief, what was the purpose of bringing this before us?
To get 10 police officers.
Okay, was to bring 10, not, not to say, oh, you know, hey, council, I wasn't here.
Yeah.
Uh, but I watched it. Or was it to say, hey, councilman, I'm going to call you out on your bluff? Because that's what, that's what this seems like right now.
Absolutely not, Councilman Sab and I have absolutely.
No, 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 if we have the money.
I think it was just a misunderstanding what was said, that's all.
No, I never once brought up a million dollars about anything.
All right, well, maybe I misunderstood.
So let's schedule a Tuesday, next Tuesday, city council, uh, study session. I'll wait, I'll wait on, on Police Chief Swol and if he can come up with it, we'll discuss it in a study session, we'll bring it to the following Tuesday meeting.
Council Chair, Chief Swol done so much in the last couple of months, to be honest with you, I think he'll do his magic and come up with something.
Yeah, he's doing a great job.
I appreciate it and, and I'm looking forward to Tuesday.
Council Chair.
Just, just to, to the record is.
Hang on one second, Roger. Point of order.
Uh, coun- uh, council did ask him if he wanted some extra officers come before us on the next meeting. That's what we said, come before us and ask for them, so he's, that's what he's doing.
Yeah, but, but where's the money coming from?
I know, well, we didn't, we didn't give him those directions, he just, we asked him if he wants them, come before us and ask for them, that's, that's what he's doing.
Like everything else, they have to ask.
Yeah, I understand.
I'll come up with something.
I would just add quickly, isn't there a grievance filed, um, to get more officers currently?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a grievance filed, you know, um, we're supposed to have a certain amount of officers, you know, in the police department at the patrol level. Um, there's supposed to be 11, uh, assigned to each day shift and 10 assigned to each night shift. Currently, that's not the case. So therefore, um, you know, the, the union filed a grievance and, um, you know, they're not wrong, so I, I told them, let me see what I can do to make sure, um, I can work with, you know, council and the mayor to, to see what we can do to try and rectify those problems. Um, you know, because, you know, some people, you know, you know, want us to bring back, you know, school resource officers and all that. I'm not doing that, 100% not going to happen. Um, so.
What's not going to happen?
Losing any school resource officers or DEA people, like, that's not my.
Yeah, I, I want you to correct it because I knew where you were at.
Yeah, no, sometimes I talk.
You got all the trustees sitting here like, what?
No, no, I, I have a straight relationship with, uh, with the school districts and, um, I'm not losing any of my people, so I'm going to, you know, attempt to, to do some, some miracle work here and, and.
And we're going to support you.
Some money, I appreciate it.
Just, uh, I know, just Chief Swol, just, uh, you know, the union filed a grievance, he said.
Yeah.
Um, but this is, was, uh, this was the budgeted, uh, police officers that was proposed to us.
No, and we actually was proposed 48, we brought up to 45.
Okay.
No, because of the supervisor's position.
Yeah.
I know, then we switched it because they miscalculated how many sergeants were transferred, so we, and in order to get the budget to work, we went to 45. It was originally at 48.
Yeah, and I'm not putting blame on anybody, that's why I say we've worked together to try and rectify the problem, you know, as we should, as, you know, the police chief, council and, and the mayor, I think we can do that.
Thank you.
And we can just, uh, because it's collective bargaining, right? It's in the, it's in their contract, they should have a certain amount of people.
And we were at 38 before when this budget started and we're now at 45, so just.
I think we're doing pretty good with, with hiring.
43, but two coming.
Two are coming, you said.
I think we're doing great with hiring, so.
Yeah.
I'm just going to keep pushing forward.
I'd like to suggest that we approach Tifa to see if there's any possibility of funding coming from that source. And worst case scenario, I'm sure everybody in the city agrees we need police officers.
Of course.
So if it comes to that, maybe the spring election, we could vote on additional funding to encourage that.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to table this.
Amend the motion to refer to a study session.
Chief, let me know if Tuesday's not, if it's not, uh, if it's too soon, uh, just send me an email and I'll have George switch it, but as of now, I'll add it to next Tuesday for a study session.
That's good.
Good?
Should be good.
Thank you.
Okay, so you want to amend that?
Yep.
All right, I'm going to amend motion 9K and suggest that we have a study session on the 15th. Uh, would that be 6 o'clock?
Just table it, refer to the.
Oh, wait.
Just refer back to the administration and I'll add, I'll have, get with George and they'll, uh, we'll do that.
Okay, so refer back to.
Yep, refer back to, to the administration.
All right, as, as stated.
As stated. So do you second that, Councilman Constant?
I do.
Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, Police Chief Swol, dispatch budget amendment request.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved, uh, approved to approve.
Moved to.
Council approved the amendment to the police department overtime and salaries accounts as follows, adjust the 2024-2025 dispatcher maximum from 9.5 employees to 10.5 employees. Amend the police overtime budget 101-300-709-000 by transferring $39,977.60 from the police overtime to police department salaries 101-300-706-000 to fund the additional dispatcher salary. In addition, authorize the controller to amend the budget, general ledger accounts accordingly as outlined in 9-L.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Chief, you see how this one did this? It gave me a general ledger here, I knew where the money was coming in from, this is easy, 39,000, you and I spoke about this, you actually even gave us a presentation on how we're going to do it, and now you're capitalizing, guys, I'm capitalizing on it, so thank you for that.
All right, you're welcome.
That's, Council Chair, this question, that, was that the young man that was hired yesterday?
No, that was actually, that would put us at 9.5, so this, this will put us at 10.5 and then we're going to keep going all the way until we get to 13, so we're getting there.
Again, two new dispatches.
That's correct.
That's awesome. Okay.
All right. Um, motion made by Councilwoman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Uh, we're moving on to, um, there's no petition from citizens, moving to 11 ordinances and resolutions, uh, Chief Hernandez and City Engineer D, CDBG, DR, Infrastructure Resiliency Planning Resolution.
Council, who can?
Councilwoman?
I'll make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopts a resolution authorizing entering agreements for community development block grant disaster recovery, known as CDBG-DR, planning grant with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for infrastructure resiliency planning. In addition, designate Chief of Staff Hernandez as the Environmental Review Certifying Officer, the person authorized to certify the Michigan CDBG-DR application, the person authorized to sign the grant agreement and payment requests, and the person authorized to execute any additional documents required to carry out and complete the grant is outlined in 11A.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Nancy Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Okay, what time? Um, yeah, the, uh, authorizing the Chief of Staff Hernandez as the Environmental Review Certifying Officer, um, and not to say anything bad, but I mean, is there qualifications that we, that need to be met to hold that position or?
I think we're going to have the Chief of Staff, and my question was, there's no attachment to this motion, there's no backup whatsoever.
So this is a continuation of the original CDBG-DR disaster relief, uh, grants that we've had study sessions for over a year now. Uh, this is for the funding that we got awarded due to the floods in 2021. Um, the only reason that these resolutions are coming back to you is because our planning grant, uh, they requested that we split that grant into two separate grants, which are these two. And just part of the formalities of the grant is to have a resolution from the council supporting it. So we already had one for the combined project that we approved in the past and now, again, we're just separating it because we have better chances of funding them separately.
No, no, I appreciate that, but can we do it like from now on, make sure that just put it, put the backup again, so it'll be easier for us just to see exactly what we're looking at.
So, Councilman, I appreciate that, but, but, um, Mr. Abrahat was right, this was presented in May, but it was one and, and, and we had a change in the administration at, um, in the Michigan, the state of Michigan. The administrator for that grant retired and his replacement did not accept what the prior administrator said. One resolution for the grant, he said, no, he, I need two separate resolutions for the two tasks, the master plan and the resiliency. So it is, it is already in progress and we already have it underway, it's just that one combined resolution from you is no longer acceptable to this gentleman, he wanted two separate resolutions, that's why we're back.
No, no, I completely understand Mr. Dib, but it's just easier for us to know what we're looking at, I mean, we look at so many different things.
Okay.
That's, we can have the backup. Any more discussion from anybody else?
Council, I mean, where are these resolutions that we're approving, I mean?
That's what I'm saying, that's.
Yeah, I mean, this is.
The backup, please talk about the backup.
Yeah, the back.
Yeah, so in May, we had them all presented, if you recall, the two bridges and the master plan, so like the hip and pole bridge, we had a study session, but the resolution, which is part of the application, they agreed to have one resolution from you for both of them. And now they're saying, well, can you separate the resolution?
That's. Council Chair.
Sorry, he also had a study session two weeks ago.
Agreement before we. We also had the study session.
Two weeks ago with the update with regards to the separation.
Completely understand. That's good, we still need to, to approve this or deny this, we need to see the agreement that you're talking about.
Right.
So you're telling us.
So we won't get the agreement until the grant is awarded, which won't happen without the resolution?
I think you're talking about what was approved in the past.
We need to see the resolution.
The resolution was approved for two, for the two tasks.
I understand that, just put it in the backup.
And they want to separate them, that's all they, so the new administrator said, separate them so we can process it. It's just an administration thing.
I, I have a question. Why aren't these resolutions, why is the Chief of Staff or not the mayor signing these?
So the grants come up, come with a lot of, uh, tasks associated with them, which require reports and submissions that have to be submitted by a city administrator. That is typically me because the mayor does not have the time to go into the online systems and do the details here and there.
Honestly, I just, I, I, I see that every time something like this comes by, it's kind of, it kind of worries me that he doesn't want to sign, put his name on anything.
So he signs the agreement as a whole, right? He, he signs the total agreement.
But he is the administrator of the city.
Yeah, but he is not the grant administrator, you can have multiple grant administrators in each grant.
Who's the grant administrator?
Me and Mr. Dib.
So, okay, we're going to go back to Funding Scout then. If you guys are the grant administrators.
Okay.
And you're saying that they're go out and they're doing all the meetings and everything. So how come we got administrators here?
So we're the city representative, we are, we represent the city, we're the recipients. So we're the ones that says, so they, we specify what the, what the project is, we write the scope, we, we do the actual, so he's.
The mayor is delegating that to you guys.
So, so, so here, I'm, I'm sorry, Mariano, so here's my position on this, which we support anything with grants, but honestly, I believe that if your name is on it, so should the mayor's signature be on it.
So again, the mayor will sign the final agreement?
Any agreement that comes forward, the mayor's signature should be on it.
It's a little complicated because the online systems, you have to be the administrator to gain access to them, right? So if I'm not the administrator, I won't get the reminders of, hey, you have a report due, or we have questions about this, or can you send me an update about this invoice? Um, that's why it has to be the person, because it, it allows you the access. So when the grant gets awarded, let's say in the FEMA access, for example, or in HUD, they create that user as approved by the council. So if I don't have user access, then the mayor would become the grant administrator. So that's, that's what the thing is, and, and again, that's why you have to do it that way. Same as when we did this, the ARPA funds, like I was also the administrator for the ARPA funds, because you have to have that name approved by the council associated with the online portals. portals.
But that's, but that's why we paid one point some million dollars to have a company tell us how to spend that money?
You can't have a company represent the city. It has to be a city representative.
Interesting.
Look, I'm gonna tell you, moving forward, I, I wanna see the mayor's name. I don't, I don't wanna see Chief of Staff Hernandez. You're not the mayor of the city of Dearborn Heights.
He can't do the report.
There's a portal and progress, they're constantly, you're constantly doing updates.
You can delegate those to you guys to do.
You sign up almost weekly.
But his name is not on here.
His name is not on here to delegate that.
He's granting, he's granting permission, hang on, guys, he's granting permission from a federal grant, saying, "I'm not signing onto it, my chief of staff is."
He's saying, "I'm the administrator." He's not saying, "I'm not signing off on it."
You're not the mayor of the city of Dearborn Heights.
I understand, but again, I think that you're missing the, the, the purpose of the resolution. The purpose of the resolution is to.
I know, I know what the purpose of the resolution is. We know the resolution is completely different than what we're talking. We're saying every time this comes before us, it says your name and not Bill Bazey.
Yes, because he's assigned me as the grant administrator with Mr. Deep for these. It was approved in the past, but it's okay. We can try to find a way to have three users in the accounts.
There you go.
And, and see if we all can get our announcements for them. But again, the point is, somebody has to do the work, and that's typically me and Mr. Deep.
Any other discussion?
Counselor Chair, I have a question.
Yeah.
Chief of Staff and our city engineer said that this resolution was already approved together. That makes our records incorrect. So, shouldn't that first one that you did be rescinded? Because you're approving it twice, right?
Hundred percent.
But I don't know the motion number, because this is the new one, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can get you that number.
And to rescind whatever motion it is, to reflect.
To replace.
To rescind it, so this one is new, and then what George would do is go in.
Why don't we send these two back, updated, add the mayor's name to it?
I don't know if there's a time.
I would hope we don't do that, because we're in a timeline for the grants.
You know, you guys always tell us.
I can give you the grant right now.
So, this is not our fault. So, this, the state changed this, and we have $2 million and $90,000, $91,000, run on us. They changed it. They accepted the first one, now they're saying, a new, a new person says, "I need two separate ones."
Well, the resolution's not correct regarding.
Checking emails.
What's, what's the timeframe on it?
Deny it, please.
You, you could just add the, you can amend it and add the mayor's name.
What's gonna happen?
Okay.
We will lose $2 million.
Sorry. In my opinion, it's a simple solution. We could amend the resolution right now by adding the mayor's name to it as well. And I can give you the prior resolution right now to rescind it. So, I think we can get this resolved today.
All right, let's do it. And we'll all work together.
Yep.
Counselor Chair, what is the timeframe on this? I don't know, everything's always a rush.
No backup, that's why.
Counselor Chair, I'd like to know when they became aware of this.
Hold on, Councilman, go ahead.
I'd like to know the exact date they became aware of this. How long has it been sitting on somebody's desk?
You're not gonna get any information.
One week since we were notified that it has to go back for resolution approval.
Counselor Chair, I have my original question. Hang on, hang on, Councilman.
What date did you actually get notified that it had to be split?
I can forward that email to you right now, but it was last week. It was like right when we were submitting the information.
They said, "You have a week to do this, and if not, you're losing $2 million," according to Mr. Deep.
They notified us that the resolution that we had approved in the past was no longer valid, and that they needed this additional separation. So.
Look, let's just make these changes, give us the ones to rescind. Give us the mayor's name on here.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair, my, Counselor Chair. One of my original questions was the environmental review certifying officer, that, the, Mr. Hernandez, I mean, what is that? And what, what's that, I mean, what is that?
Environmental Chief Operator.
I mean, what's environmental review certifying officer? We're gonna prove something that we don't even know what that terminology means.
So, again, the environmental reviewer is going to be a part of the team, which is our city engineer.
What's it do?
It reviews the application and everything associated with it. For this grant, because they're planning, again, they're gonna be looking at the resiliency of the water, it has to be reviewed for environmental reasons and lots of other studies. That's why we have Mr. Deep on the team with me, as well as Wade Trim, who they're the ones who are gonna prepare the specs and do the studies and tell us what's there. Mr. Deep and I review it. I sign off on it in the grant, where Mr. Deep signs off on the grant.
I gotta tell you something, please don't take this the wrong way. When you read this packet, you should have asked that question to Mr. Deep or the chief of staff beforehand. Like, when you read this and you read that in the backup, you should have asked that question beforehand. And I sent you guys all an email. Please answer, ask, ask these questions, right? So that we're not having to ask, like, what is this and what is that? Oh, I still, it's still not answered.
Yeah.
Yeah. Still not, I mean, right.
So, again, every grant comes with an environmental review by the engineers. That has to be submitted to the grants as another part of the applications. That's gonna be prepared by our consultants, and then typically reviewed by the city engineer and myself before final submission.
I'll, I'll email, 'cause I mean, is that required?
Yes.
Environmental review officer?
Yes, because it's a requirement from all city grants.
Can you give us the rescinding number?
Sorry.
If I can get a computer, I'll get it for you faster.
While you're doing that, I'm gonna switch over to comments from council members.
No, there's still another one.
Well, she needs both of them. The same one, so you need them both. Be able to rescind it. No, she's working on it. I'm gonna take comments from council members, and speed up, 'cause I know we have some people that are waiting. No, he left.
No.
Oh, man, come on, count, comments from council members. Counselor Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Council.
This just off, I was just, we had a great time at the firefighter's open house this past Saturday, had my whole family there. There was a couple of issues that I won't bring up now, but not related to the fire department at all. But it was a good time, it was well organized, lot of stuff for the kids to do. Hats goes off to Chief Rogan and all the firefighters, and I mean, pulled this off of a really good time. And there, there again, we, you know, who we had there working, volunteering, we had the students from Crestwood High School there volunteering, yeah. Good job.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Chair.
Is he done?
Are you done, Councilman?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Nice and sweet, Councilwoman?
Nope.
Councilman Ahmad?
I think so.
Councilwoman Breyer?
All right, I'd like to add to that, that the police or the fire chief took me through the building, and we checked all the rooms, and everything is within okay condition as far as the mold. There was only one area that was bad, and no one's involved in that. They also had an incident where the chief, or no, the captain, had some of his ceiling tiles come in during the rainstorm on top of his bed. However, he was not in it at the time. So, things seem to be moving around, and they are still patching the roof, however.
Thank you. Well, that was gonna be my comments from council members. If we had an update from the administration, maybe Mariana Hernandez or the mayor, I don't know if he left or if he's still here, but if he can give us an update on the fire station. I know that we went out for bids, we, we, you know, we heard from our fire department, our honorable officers, firefighters, who have told us their living conditions, and I wanna make sure that this isn't something we're sleeping on. But I guess I'll wait in here after we go back to our resolution.
Sorry, 23546 is the number of the motion that needs to be rescinded?
23546.
Four fives.
23546.
546.
546. 234.
23546.
We need a motion?
Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna amend. No, the motion, we'll, so we're just gonna amend the motion to rescind 3546, motion 3546, and additionally add Mayor Bill Bazey to this as the administrator.
Thank you.
Who made that motion?
Councilwoman Breyer.
I did.
Would you like to amend your motion to add 3546, rescind 3546, and add Mayor Bill Bazey?
All right, we want to rescind 3546.
23546.
23546.
23, okay. All right. Yeah, no, it's confusing, 23, I thought it was 3546.
23546.
546, that's what I have now. Okay, all right. Okay, and after we rescind that portion, you also wish to have the mayor's name put on it.
Yes, and, and on the additional, we'll just add it to the other one when we read it. Motion, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that? Like, we had enough? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Deep, I hope that makes you happy, you gotta smile. There it is. Next up, we have 11B. Anyone wanna read it?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution authorizing, entering into agreements for a community development block grant, disaster recovery, CDBG-DR planning grant with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for a comprehensive master plan. In addition, designate the chief of staff, Mariana Hernandez, as the environmental review certifying officer, the person authorized to certify the Michigan CDBG-DR application, the person authorized to sign the grant agreement and payment requests, and the person authorized to execute any additional documents required to carry out and complete the grant as outlined in 11B.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Ahmad with the rescinding of 23546 and adding Mayor Bill Bazey to this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have comments from council members. My, my comments were just about the fire station. Chief, Chief of Staff, can you give us an update on it? I know the mayor's not here. Mr. Deep.
Fire chief's up there.
Mr. Deep is in. There's a grant denied.
Smiles, big smiles. By the way, I want you guys to know, I absolutely admire and respect and appreciate Mr. Deep so much. The guy does great work, I call him, same thing for the last two years, Mr. Baydood.
Mr. Baydood, no.
There you go.
So, you had requested a roof replacement, we're talking about the roof?
I'm talking about the fire station. We know that it's in shambles. We wanna know the repair that we're doing.
The replacement, the one we just received, the grant tonight, the check, the $500,000, or the repairs on the roof?
Repairs. They came in here, the health, the safety commission came in.
The, we received proposals for the replacement of the roof at the, at the fire station, which is what you had asked the consultant to do back in July, June, end of June.
We said repair.
And so, the roof replacement, there was a roof replacement. So, they gave us, they gave us, they gave us standard specifications for a full replacement of, of the roof, and there were two proposals. I reviewed them, in particular, the one on, so there were two roofs, one, one repair on the south station, and one replacement at.
It was vice versa. It was a repair on the south end, and it was going to be a.
Replacement on the north end.
No, replacement is on the south end and repair on the, on the north end.
So, here, here's, so, until, all right, so there are two things, the, the repair, so that's not what the consultant did. I wasn't here when you asked them. So, they gave us a full replacement proposal for the north end, and that was expensive, because as you know, the station is, is slated for demolition. On the south end, we had a pending grant from the state of Michigan for the second floor addition to the fire station. So, you don't wanna replace or repair a roof and come back and sit, and the, the grant approval was due end of September. So, last Saturday, I saw the representative, Erin Burns, and I asked her about the status, and she said, you know, "Not this year, Ali, maybe next year." So, now we know we're not doing the second floor. So, I went back and says, "Okay, now we need to repair that roof currently." So, it's out, we got three consult, three people looking at it, no, no consultant, I'm doing the repair. So, that's for the south end, repair, right?
How was there on that conversation with Erin Burns?
The fire, yeah, Erin, she, she said, "Maybe next year." So, the money for the second floor is slated for 25 budget, not this year. So, now we know we have to do repair, we're not gonna do a second floor. Going back to the, to the Beach Daily, Beach Daily, I'm working with, we've got the two, two numbers, two replacements, and I don't wanna do a replacement, I like to do a repair, a three to five-year repair, plus the environmental work down below. So, we've got the separate prices, the roofers don't do the environmental work, Councilman Ahmad gave me a number, and I called him, and, and so I've got two prices for the environmental work, and then two prices, two prices for replacement. I'm going now for a repair, three to five-year repair. I expect to get the numbers next, next week. So, by next council meeting, I will present three options for you. Repairs, three to five years, and then environmental, two separate companies, and then the same for the south end. So, now we're doing repairs, no replacement on both of them, to get three to five-year life.
Mr. Deep, just please make sure, whatever company you bring, they're vetted and a legitimate roofing company, 'cause this is the safety and health of our firefighters.
Sir, I always, I always vet the company, I don't have a cousin in.
No, no, I'm not saying cousins at all, I'm just saying the star of the company.
They, they, they have to be licensed and bonded and insured, but.
All right, any other council members from, thank you, Mr. Deep, that was great.
Counselor Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Counselor Chair. I, I stay here this evening with heavy heart, especially for those in our community mourning loved ones lost overseas due to the tragic events unfolding as a result of the Israeli bombardment in Lebanon. This is a time of great sorrow, and I want everyone to know that we are in this together. We share in your grief and your struggle, and we will continue to support one another through these challenging times. As we reflect on this situation, it is crucial that we raise our voices against Israeli violence and injustice. The ongoing action that have led to such immense suffering cannot be ignored. We must call for an end to the violence and the genocide that is taking place. Our community deserve peace, compassion, and understanding. Counselor Chair, also, like, I know you, you got so many calls, I got so many calls about the water bills. I mean, this is, needs to be investigated. Either we need to take this to a study session, or maybe put a motion on table to bring a third party that can audit, investigate, whatever it's called, with the water billing. I mean, I got like three, four calls, they sent me bills, I sent them to the mayor, they're like over $5,000, in the same subdivision. There's something going, I know you got the same calls too for different homes, Councilman Sob did, other council members did.
Call for a finish.
So, so I think, we need to do something about this. This is an ongoing problem. I mean, there's something going on, there's no way people are, you know, spending that much water. So, either, please, either, I mean, I'll put it in your court, either put it to a study session, or, I don't know, you want me to bring a motion to hire a third party? I'm not sure if Mr. Deep can help us with this, but this is, needs to stop.
Sure he can.
People, you know, are suffering out there, so.
There is, there is some things that have been going around with the water bills, because if you heard $5,000, I swear to you, I have a resident that called me and said, "I've been getting estimates on my property for two years." Estimates. They called me recently and said, "I owe $5,000," because they've been underestimating me for the last two years, and they want me to come up with the, this is a senior, by the way. A senior that was getting a bill for $110 and said, "Where do you expect me to get $5,000 from?" So, I mean, the city's gonna have to do its part. I think, you know, an investigation from our city, and with all due respect to Mr. Deep, I don't think Mr. Deep's the answer either, I don't think anybody in the water department's the answer either. 100%, a third-party investigation needs to happen on our water department. Our taxpayers, our water payers are, are suffering way too much. To be honest with you, it's complete bullshit. You know, people should not be paying 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7,000 for a water bill. That's, I have residents telling me, "I refuse, I didn't even fill up my pool, I wouldn't water my grass, the blight in front of my house, my grass looks dead because I refused to water my grass." But yet, we're fighting people and saying, "We want you to beautify our city," but our water bills are extremely high. So, there's, there's definitely something, and I keep hearing, "Well, GWLA comes out, and they sell it to you at a cost, but, so then, you know, we go up." No way. We have the highest water rates in the state, state of Michigan, surrounded by water, has, here comes Dearborn Heights, highest water rate. That is crazy. No way. There's something definitely going, something going on, and, and I definitely believe a third-party, a third-party investigation needs to happen.
I can bring the motion next.
And what is happening, and I will bring something forward at the next city council meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Chair.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. I have one more point. I saw something last week, it was like a press release or a statement that really bothered me, talking about Dearborn Heights being, having the worst drivers, which is, I don't think it's true. I, I did, I did discuss it with Chief Swope, and he's looking into data. I mean, obviously, maybe they look at it, maybe we're giving tickets while we do, I mean, our police department, they're doing their job, but keep in mind, we have at least four or five major roads that go through our city. We have Ford Road, Telegraph, Van Born, Ingster, Warren, Joy Road, so people that drive through our city. So, it's not just us.
Those roads go through every other cities.
I understand, but I mean, people going through our city, and I guess they think they can drive the way they wanna drive, and we're stopping them. So, I know Chief Swope, he was more than happy to help on the situation, he's looking into data, and he's gonna give a statement soon. Hopefully, it's to correct the statement that was given before, that we, you know, Dearborn Heights residents are the worst drivers. Maybe some, but I won't say we have the worst drivers.
And I don't even know how they came up with this, that, that, I think it was complete bull crap.
Just a campaign against Dearborn Heights, I'm not sure.
Counselor Chair.
Accidents. Have you not seen the?
Cell phones.
Cell phones from the ears. You're right, you chased some lady down, right?
One comes in front of me today, with a cell phone in her ear, making a left turn, did not count. I get five every day. You should pay a cell phone in your ear anyway. Drive it, that's like escalating, God save.
Oh, nice, trust.
I could be hands free.
Thank you, Counselor Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. Also, I also just want to tell you, you do a phenomenal job. Councilman Ahmad is always speaking from the heart. He's always giving back. He's, you know, when you listen to this man, it's truly intrinsic. And really, we lean on you. We love you, and thank you for being here with us, man. Really. God bless you.
Good luck, Councilman. Council.
Okay, Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. I too attended the firefighters' open house. It was a great event. I looked at the mangled car that was there, and I know they had a demonstration of the jaws of life that will remind everybody to drive carefully and to slow down. We have Halloween coming up. Just to echo what Councilman Hassan Ahmad so eloquently said about what's going on in the Middle East, the bombing by Israel of civilian targets in Beirut and elsewhere. I saw something, a new segment about a program. They're using AI. They assigning number to a person, Israeli IDF, and then they wait for that person to go into their house, and they blow up the house and their family. And they're using artificial intelligence to do that. It's just awful. So I remind everyone, as Councilman Hassan Ahmad did too, we are all in this together to speak out to your elected officials.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Sob patiently waiting.
First, I want to talk about what's happening in the Middle East, and I've said this every week I've been here. Israel is a state of terror. They're the largest sponsor of terror in the world. And I say this on the record, and I say it to anybody, that Israeli forces have been decimating and carpet bombing South Lebanon.
And Beirut.
And Beirut. Our home, in the city of Bintishbe, just two days ago, sent a video, three-story home. It's dust. They're not using regular bombs. They're using bombs that literally destroy the home beyond its foundations. And this is funded here by America. We're giving them an average of $1.5 billion a month to do this with our tax money. And this is the administration we're currently having in the United States. All we do is fund terrorism back home in the interest of what? What national interest do we have in Lebanon or in Gaza? None. What is it? Every house they want to... Our home is vacant in Lebanon. What terrorists or bombs are in there? The amount of people that are dying every day.
EMTs and firefighters.
They're attacking hospitals, EMS workers, firefighters. Just 10 firefighters this morning.
Go up and tell your fire station.
Fire station. Killing 10. Israel is a state of terror. They're a terrorist sponsoring state. Benjamin Netanyahu should be held accountable at International Court for his war crimes, and so should be Joe Biden, Kamala Harris, and everybody else that supports him. And shame on members of our community, our elected officials that do not condemn Israel and that are scared because of a position or a vote that they're gonna lose while all their people are getting executed and killed overseas. Whether you're Christian, you're Muslim, whatever you are in the Middle East, they're not saving nobody. Israel has destroyed 173 churches since the beginning of their campaign in Lebanon, over 200 mosques. Why? Because they can. Because they can. Because America funds it. Money, money, money's going overseas. Look what happened in North Carolina and South Carolina last week. Where's their help here? Where's our help? $750.
We're expecting a hurricane tomorrow.
Tomorrow, another hurricane. They're hoping now for another $700. But anyway.
Thank you.
Ahmad, done yet? Water bills. I had residents on a cul-de-sac reach out to me. All seven residents got a sticker from the city on their doors, excessive water usage. I have a bill that I sent to the mayor. It's $11,000 per resident. $11,000. The cheapest bill that came on that cul-de-sac was $3,900. There's a resident that's 90 years old that lives on her own with one bathroom, one kitchen. Her bill is $3,800. There's something wrong. The lady that came here last year in November, and remember, I would make fun, like, I guess she has holy water. Her bill came $11,000 now. Again. When the city was out there, they disconnected her water meter. Her meter was still running, and they've never done nothing about it. So this is honestly a citywide issue. The city needs to step up. Because myself, it's only my wife and I at home. My water bill is nearly $2,000. It's unacceptable. I don't fill up my pool on a daily basis, honestly. No, 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 no.
And he showers over his in-laws, too. He doesn't shower at home.
Trying to reduce my...
I don't even think he showers.
It's definitely not me. But honestly, a third-party investigation should be, I don't know what it is. I don't know who's watching over our meters, our water, our pressure going in our meters. Because I know Mr. Deeb said one time they raised the pressures, and some of our meters are older than the city, I think, that are installed. It's just, it's insane. I mean, I had a lady that called me with an 875 square foot home. Her water bill is $1,500 for two months.
And you know what's being told to these residents when they come in and say, "Why is my water bill so high?" They're saying, "Well, you must have a leak." Why is the leak? Why does everybody have a water leak? Why doesn't the city have the issue?
And then one more thing I had for the administration. I want to check with Mariano or Mr. Deeb or whoever. The studio that's supposed to be getting built in the Police Department, again, I want to put on the record. Is it getting built? Yes or no? No? Okay. If it's getting built? Okay. Are you done? That's it? Thank you.
Councilor Chair, speaking of water bills, though, I mean, we've talked about this before, about having an outside entity come in and monitor...
This time, I get a resolution. I'll say that it's unanimous by this time.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Moving on to administration.
I'll be quick.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
What I wanted to do, make sure you write this down, because I've already talked to Chief Swope about it, and we'll share with him. But the Item 9K, the police budget for the additional patrol, you're kind of kicking around, where's the money coming from? Great question. So I reviewed the cash flow for the last three months and our revenue. So our revenue is up a little bit, so we could take a look there. That's one thing I wanted to offer to you all. The second thing I wanted to offer is what I offered before when I was a city council member, and that was the Army PAYS program, which stands for Partnership for Your Success. PAYS, P-A-Y-S. Write this down, because I'm sending it to Chief Swope, and I want you all to know about it.
Email it to us.
Yes, I will email it, and I want the residents to know about it, because you've heard about it before. And it's a really great program, but it's not just the Army that does it. Other branches of the Army do it. When their members, and they have police MOS, when they're getting ready to exit the Army or the whatever, whatever rank, or in the Navy or whatever, they look for jobs. They look for a place to live. They look for a place to buy a home and to settle and keep their family. And so this is a partnership with them to give them, the very least, an interview with your city and maybe hire, because they're already trained. Already trained. And once upon a time, and I know legal has to be included, because legal was before when we did this, they used to offer some funds, but I don't know if they still do, but I wanted to put it on your radar.
Thank you. The Honorable clerk, Lynn Sinia.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll be real quick, too. Congratulations, Dr. Musalem.
One more round of applause for Dr. Musalem.
You're doing awesome.
Guy stole a freaking room today.
But I also want to thank, I know Councilman Wenzel thanked the NHS. They are there for us every single election as well, right? I mean, they are there. They're footships, but they're always there. And as well as our precinct locations in Crestwood. We have Riverside. Dave is outstanding, and Sammy filled in really good for him in August, and Scott over at Kenlock, and all the staff there, too. In addition, we do have Dearborn Public Schools that host District 7, Westwood, St. Sabina, our library, and our Parks and Rec Department. So that's the thank yous for now. I just wanted to update you. AV ballots went out. We're up to approximately 7,200 that have been issued. About 25% return, which is not too bad. We get those ballots in, because we don't want them all coming in at the last day. We do have our ballot boxes at the Justice Center, the JFK Library, the Ray, and here at City Hall. Early voting starts. That's new this year. We had it in February, August, and we want a great turnout for November. It starts October 26th, runs for nine consecutive days, so that's through November 3rd, and that's from 8:30 to 4:30. One last thing. We're always looking for workers to join our team, so contact us at 791-3430 or come stop in and see us.
What were you doing? Promise you'd work.
He's gonna work.
100%, I'm working.
I'm gonna put you down. We'll have you come in and fill out any application, or we'll put it in here.
And I'm gonna donate the money that's paid to me to the Police and Fire. How does that sound?
We'll have to give that to you, and then you can do that.
Yeah, but I just want you to know that before this meeting started, Mr. Debaugh just said, "When you come in here, I want you to tell Lynn Sinia how much I love her and how much I appreciate her." He said, "I'll be on Zoom, but I won't be able to be in person." So he just wanted me to share that message. I don't know why he just didn't raise his hand and say it there in public comments. But maybe he should do that. I just wanted to share the message that he asked me to share with you at like 5 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Director McCaffrey?
Well, hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just want to talk about a couple of items. First off, this Thursday, October 10th, from 10 to 8:00, and Friday, October 11th, and Saturday, October 12th, from 10 to 5:00, that Carolyn County Library will be having our annual book sale. The Friends of the Library have been storing around 240 boxes of books through the past few months, so lots of items will be available, so come on out. Also, we have a busy day on October 26th at both libraries. At JFK Library from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., we will be having a cemetery or Halloween-themed terrarium in a jar, aka a cemetery. Space is limited, so register at the JFK Circulation Desk or call 313-791-6050. Also, the evening of the 26th, we will be having a trunk or treat and mini golf at the Carolyn County Library from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. as we kick off raising money for local families in need during the holiday season. You want to host a trunk or assist, please call 313-791-3804 or email me at, this is way too long, an email address, mpmccaffery@dearbornheightsmi.gov. I also want to pass along some well wishes to our supervising librarian, Lynn Skazalski, and her family, who recently retired. She was a valuable part of our community for 16 years, did not only help our city well, but helped bring about change locally for the library world in Southeast Michigan. She will be sorely missed. Finally, want to congratulate Saba Alhassami, who has been promoted to Lynn's role as branch manager, and AJ Waya-Moyer, who's promoted to manager of outreach. That's all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Mr. McCaffrey, I'm gonna make sure that Councilman Ahmad pledges $100 to the trunk or treat.
I'll do that.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I'll accept that. I'll accept that.
He's the rookie, he's the rookie councilman. We gotta...
Thank you.
Thank you. $100 pledged. That guy won't give you a dollar. How do you think you're so rich?
Councilor Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
In addition to the announcement, I'd like to comment. At our last meeting, we head for the Ekor's Creek. We had in attendance, oh, about 34 people. And Ali Deeb, our engineer, and the mayor found sources that are going to put a special thing for one mile of the Ekor's Creek. Was that near Pardee, or was that... Okay. And he can elaborate a little bit more, but a lady from, we had Centec?
Down River Community?
We had quite a few people. We had a great presentation, and we had some people there. And go ahead, Ali.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So, yes, so that was a great event. DCC is providing assistance for that one mile. I believe we presented that, the one mile of Ekor's Creek, which is basically, we're asking, we're trying to coordinate efforts with any agency that will give us funding or possible funding. So in addition to the work, so this particular agency now working with a great consultant, Stantak, looking at the global issue of the flooding of Ekor's Creek. So they're looking at the wider issue of the creek from inception to the Detroit River. So they're also looking at the big picture of the St. Lawrence, so how it fits, or where the water goes and, you know, part of the Great Lakes. So as part of that project, we were able to make the presentation to the DCC of the need for Dearborn Heights, and they concentrated on their efforts, so they were able to get that one funding for a trial section of the Ekor's Creek within Dearborn Heights to see if that proposal, if we can come up with a pilot plan. And they got the funding for that one mile just east of Telegraph. So Ekor's Creek, one mile east of Telegraph.
And it was awarded to us?
They're doing that on our behalf, so they actually, they're coordinating all the efforts. So to prevent duplication, I put them in touch with the big Corps of Engineer, you know, Big Solution, plus the Wayne County repairs that the county's doing. And I gave them copies of our drone that we invested in, so they know the status and condition. And they also are coordinating with FEMA, so the floodplain, as we all know, are constantly changing. That's why we pay, you know, for that monitoring station, so we know exactly the water level and where it's moving. So the floodplains have moved from east of Telegraph, recently FEMA indicated, to, from west of Telegraph on Ekor's to just east. So that's why we're doing the session where, you know, if it makes sense, and they're paying for it. So they're coming back and use it. So we're trying to coordinate with anyone that can assist and pay. So the county, just for the record, for the county cleanup that's going to Dearborn Heights, the last I heard coordination-wise is that it winter or spring. So they didn't make it the first year, but they still have money for Dearborn Heights. So for us to start, they're coming in from the Detroit River west. So for them to hit Dearborn Heights by Southfield, it'll be the winter, like late winter, or most likely early spring. So for that cleanup. So that's why it's great coordination, and they were all in that meeting to present to our people that, you know, there are a lot of efforts taking place, a lot. But, you know, again, to put these people together to prevent duplication and maybe get the best for our efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
I think it worked out good.
It was an excellent PowerPoint presentation. Too bad more people weren't there, but we had over 30.
That's awesome.
So that's the first time we've had that kind of attendance. And our next meeting, by the way, I don't expect that many people, is gonna be on the 23rd at 6 o'clock, 3335 South Beach Deling. And then on the 24th, we have the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association at 7:00 p.m. I'll announce in our next meeting who the speaker will be.
Councilwoman Brier, actually, is on many of these commissions. She's on the city council. She helps out at the Ian Center, does a phenomenal job. Round of applause to Councilwoman Brier. All right. Any other announcements? Seeing none. We're gonna go to public comments. We're gonna start in person. I know there have been many students that have been standing here waiting, so let's give them our undivided attention, please. Okay, we'll start off with the trustee, I guess.
They're coming up with...
Oh, they're coming up with you?
We're gonna all speak in a row.
You're gonna speak in a row? As long as it's not repetitive, and we're not hearing the same thing from all 10 of them.
Councilor Chair, we listen to you repetitively all night.
Hey, guys, hey, guys, hey, guys. Look, nobody knows. I stand with all of our students and I love even seeing one of you guys are, but the rules are the rules. At the end of the day. And even if my brother is, even if my brother's in the audience, I still need to make sure that I'm holding my brother accountable as well, so.
Yeah, he told him to be quiet a few times.
Yeah.
I did, too.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Danielle Alzayat, Dearborn Heights, Evangeline.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Danielle Alzayat. I'm the Crestwood School Board President of the Crestwood School Board of Education. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. I'm proud to share the remarkable progress that our district has made under the leadership of Dr. Yusuf Musalem. As you saw earlier, he's the 2024 Superintendent of the Year for the NASS. I think it's worthy of another applause. This recognition reflects the dedication and hard work we've put into making Crestwood District an excellent district. Dr. Musalem's leadership, we've seen significant improvements, student success, expanded programs and infrastructure development. However, our community continues to grow, so we do need our schools, and we do need some improvements. That's why the 2024 bond proposal is so important. I'm not here to tell anybody how to vote. I'm just here to say that there is a bond on the ballot this coming November. And anybody who would like information on this can email any of us, any of the trustees. You can email Dr. Musalem or any of the bond team members to get your answers. But I would love to encourage you to come to our in-person meetings where all your questions can be answered. And we have some upcoming meetings. Tomorrow, we have a meeting at the Childhood Center at 6:00 p.m. Next week, October 16th, we have a meeting at Riverside Middle School at 6:00 p.m. We also have another meeting, October 23rd, 6:00 p.m. at Crestwood High School. I feel...
I'm sorry, I'm gonna pause your time real quick. Can you email us those times? Pause it real quick. Can you email us all those dates?
Yes, absolutely, I will. Thank you. I appreciate that. And the reason why I feel that this is so important is we want people to come, and if you have questions, please ask us. Ask somebody who understands, somebody who was a part of putting the bond together, not somebody who's reading a quick pamphlet. And frankly, there's a lot of misinformation going out there, and it's from some administration in the city, which is very disheartening, because the bond would only improve life for our students, and that's all that matters, right? So we make our students a priority. So please, any information, join our meetings. We'd love to hear from you all. We'd love to see you all there. And if there's something that you think that we can improve on, something that you're not seeing us do, we'd love to hear from you on those things, too. Also, before I leave, and because I have the microphone, I do want to take a minute to say thank you so much for recognizing Israel's terrorism towards Palestine, towards Lebanon, towards Yemen, and all the Middle East countries that are suffering. We are American, and we love America. We love the opportunities that America gave our ancestors when they came here and immigrated. But we also will always have a special place in our heart for where our ancestors came from, just like every American in this country. And when we sit and we talk about how we're gonna try to find money for our police chief to get 10 more officers on the street to keep our community safe, to keep our residents safe, to keep our land safe, it's disheartening that all of that money that could be funding 10 police officers, 50 police officers, could go towards that instead of towards...
Thank you. I agree 100%. Imagine we took $8.9 billion and gave it to Dearborn Heights. Can you imagine the police force we'd have, the fire stations, instead we gave it to Israel to bomb people and civilians? Thank you.
I agree. I'm not sure if I can follow up Danielle, but I'm here as a mother of the Crestwood School District, as well as...
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
My name is Immanuel Zayed. I live on Kenlock, and I live in Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Now I'm gonna tell you my name again. Hello, my name is Immanuel Zayed. I'm a mother, local business owner, and proud member of our community. Today, I urge all voters to vote yes on the 2024 bond. By voting yes, this bond will fund 27 new classrooms across the district, reducing overcrowding and enhancing the learning experiences of other children. It will also transform Riverside Middle School into a career educational, technical educational center where students can explore fields like medicine, criminal justice, and computer science at a young age. I have a son who actually doesn't care for school, let's be real. I'm not sure if he's gonna choose to go to a tech school or go to college. And honestly, I think if this was available to him while he attended the middle school, I think that this would have actually helped, made his future brighter. By voting yes, we are not only investing in our schools, but also in our homes. State-of-the-art schools will benefit our students, increase property values, attract families to the Crestwood community, and ensure a brighter future. Voting yes means upgrading to aging infrastructure, replacing boilers, water heaters, pumps, and much more. Please vote yes so that we can invest in the success of our children, our students, ensure that our students, teachers, and staff have the best environment to learn, teach... have the best environment to learn, teach, develop, and grow. Please vote yes on the Crestwood School Bond, honor before November 5th. And then I wanna echo everything Danielle said in regards to Lebanon, Israel, Yemen, Syria. No, echo. Thank you, guys.
God bless you. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
My name is Mesa Abuzeni. I'm from Dearborn Heights, and I live on Fairwood. Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Mesa Abuzeni. I'm a junior at Crestwood High School and president of our student congress. I'm here today with a few of my peers to speak on behalf of the 2024 Crestwood Bond Proposal and share some of the challenges that we as students face on a daily. As a student, I've constantly experienced overcrowded hallways and the limitations of our aging facilities, including our cafeterias, classrooms, hallways, and our gym. I've also been on the varsity girls soccer team since my freshman year and participated in gym class, so I can truly say that our locker rooms have not seen updates. When we visit other schools, it's not very hard to notice how modern and well-kept their facilities are in comparison to ours, which are in a constant disrepair. I'm also a member of the band, which this year has won several competitions and caption awards for our outstanding color guard, marching, music, and percussion. Thank you. Yet despite all of these achievements, we lack the space and support to compete at a state level and are limited from exploring new types of shows and music styles because we aren't able to buy the instruments and props necessary for this. When we go to other schools for competitions, I see how they take pride in their updated band rooms, facilities, and always wonder, why not us? When it comes to school functions and sporting events, we don't have a big enough area to host many things. Our bleachers aren't even big enough to host a pep rally in the gym. And it's, and our bleachers don't even fully open all the way. So it's very hard for school spirit to thrive in this kind of an area when our facilities aren't meeting the needs of our growing student body and athletic events. I may not be benefiting, benefiting directly from the 2024 Bond Proposal since I will be graduating soon, but I believe it's my job to advocate for the future students. I want to ensure that they have a better Crestwood School District that they can be very proud of. I urge this council to support the 2024 Bond Proposal. And to everyone listening, please remember to vote on November 5th. While we, the students, can't vote yet, our voices matter, and we're counting on you to help secure a better future for Crestwood. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Your support on November 5th will make a world of a difference for our students and community. I hope to see our district thrive and improve throughout these next few years with the bond. Thank you.
Council Chair, I wanna back, I wanna piggyback something on that.
Yeah, just let, let...
Well, no, it's to what she just said.
Sure.
Okay. A few, recently, the alumni for Crestwood, which I am, was invited to walk the halls. We were guided by honor students. And I was surprised to hear there was one-way hallways because of the overcrowding. And it was explained to me, a student says, if I come out of my classroom, I gotta go that way because that's the way we're directed. Even though my next classroom's there, I have to go through the entire school to come back around to the classroom that's right next to me because of the one-way hallways and the overcrowding. And that's something I didn't realize. It didn't happen when I was a student there.
Or me.
But yeah, it was, I was shocked to hear that.
Just a comment. I, your brother, actually, took me a tour through the schools. And it's honestly, it's a shame the condition the schools are in. Honestly, as a resident of this, of the city, it's a shame. We went, I actually went under the schools and seen sewage pipes busted, literally leaking as the kids are in schools, in the hallways. I actually seen students get out of Crestwood. It was like a traffic jam. So, and all the schools, honestly, I was, even I went to Conlock, man. It was pretty disappointing how they do lunch. Now they have to put half of the students outside and half of them in the cafeteria. So there's a lot of misinformation being spread there. Honestly, with some city administrators, it's a shame. Only thing this benefits is our, is our future of our students. And to Mr. Ray Muscat, right there about skills trade and everything, I went and seen their wood shop. It's tiny. And I was told that if this bond does pass, that they're gonna bring back all trades and stuff like that, which is honestly, is so needed in the district. Because a lot of these kids are graduating, going to Ivy colleges, but have absolutely no skills when they buy a home or anything, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good evening, council members. My name is Adam Bahar. And I'm from, I live on Hyview Street. I'm from the beautiful city of Dearborn Heights. I'm an NHS...
God, please allow a round of applause.
I'm an NHS member, an ASU executive officer, and a proud Palestinian from the village of Beethomar in Al-Khalil. I stand before you tonight in utter shock and despair as the genocide committed against the people of Gaza, the West Bank, and Lebanon continues to bring unbearable pain. Our community is in mourning. Many American citizens have lost their lives in both countries. The suffering in Palestine and the Middle East weighs heavily on all of us. While much can be said about how our national policies have contributed to the death and agony, and how our country has become complicit in this genocide, I find soulless here. In the community I call home, Dearborn Heights, our community stands united in support of those who suffer in Palestine, Lebanon, and the broader Middle East. The unity gives me strength. As a lifelong Crest, student of Crestwood School District, I've always believed our students deserved better. I've seen the broken playgrounds where the metal playscapes are patched up with Band-Aid fixes. I've experienced the overcrowded hallways where I often find myself stumbling and bumping into underclassmen, just trying to make it to class without being late. I have younger family members who will definitely benefit from the 2024 Bond Proposal. While my time in Crestwood will come to an end in a couple of years, I hope that our community can do the right thing and unite in support of the students who work so hard. Last year, Crestwood High School had 34 students accepted into early admissions at the University of Ann Arbor. Five students were accepted to Ivy League schools. That's more than any high school, including private schools in our area. It's remarkable, especially when you consider that many of these students come from middle-class working families, working hard for their success. While we continue to suffer at the hands of the Israeli genocide, I ask that we also focus on how we can build a safe and prosperous community here. In Dearborn Heights and within the Crestwood School District, our students deserve facilities that match their ambition, and I hope we can come together to make that a reality through the 2024 Bond. Palestine Hura, thank you for your time.
Salaam alaikum, everybody. Good evening, council members. Honorable Chair, Mr. Mobi. My name is Hassan. I live on Fenton, and I'm a junior at Crestwood High School. So I'm the president of the Arab Student Union, a member of the band, the Crestwood Theater, the debate team, and much more. As an activist and proud member of this district, I'm honored to say that I, along with my three brothers, am a product of the Crestwood School District. I'm very active in our school and often attend events at neighboring high schools. Every time I do, I wonder why, so I wonder why other students have it better than us. Why is it that we have to suffer during extreme heat advisories? Our sisters who wear the hajjab can barely handle the heat. And yet, we are expected to continue without air conditioning. I even had to be bused to elite sports to attend gym class because our gym lacked the space to accommodate us. Two years ago, I remember freezing for two weeks when our furnace went out. And while space heaters were brought in, all I could think was, why don't we deserve, why don't we deserve the very best? Our students are incredibly successful, so why aren't our facilities reflecting that? I believe that we can make our schools better, and that's why I'm knocking on doors, asking residents of the Dearborn Heights, to vote in support of the 2024 Bond. I'm the face of what your vote impacts. This bond is not about the buildings. It's about the future of students like me, and I hope our community can unite to support that future. I also stand before you as a first-generation Arab-American. My mother came from Lebanon and attended Crestwood High School for one year before going to college. Now she is raising me and her family in the same community and district where she began her journey. That connection is powerful, and that's why I'm committed to making sure Crestwood is the best it can be. Before I close, I want to take a moment to send prayers and blessings to the families who have been martyred in Palestine and now in Lebanon. Please keep the victims of this genocide in your hearts and prayers. Thank you.
How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good evening, council members. My name is Hussein Abdullah. I live on Deerford Street in Dearborn Heights. I try to keep it short. If you guys have heard much about the bond, I am the Director of Political Action for the Arab Student Union at Crestwood. I'm also a proud member of the National Honor Society, Amity International, Key Club, and a dedicated athlete specifically on the basketball team. As a basketball player, I've seen firsthand how the space we use for practice, our locker rooms, and even the visitor benches don't meet the standards our teams deserve. When we play away games, I get to see pristine locker rooms and all the amenities that any good basketball team in our area deserve to have. I work very hard every day to stay conditioned and be the best athlete I can possibly be. But no matter how much effort I put in, it doesn't change the fact that our gym, locker rooms, and facilities are outdated and in desperate need of repair and supplies. I have many memories of home games through the embarrassing struggle to find just six basketballs that our teams could use to warm up before the games or after the games, when we, or when Crestwood students were told to attend our Fortin Crestwood game, as it was our biggest match yet. Crestwood came and showed their support, but we did not have room in our gym to even allow people in. People were standing, sitting on the floor, or not even allowed inside. My family and I take great pride in calling Crestwood School District our home. But I believe it's time we raise the standards. And when it comes to aging our building, to our aging building and facilities, the 2024 Bond Proposal is a chance to do just that. It's not only about making our schools look good. It's about providing students like me with resources we need to succeed both on and off the court. I hope that council and the community will support this bond, not just for athletes, but every current and future student that will ever attend the Crestwood School District. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I will just say, I'm a huge supporter of the bond. I'm a huge supporter of the Crestwood School District. I graduated from Crestwood. In 2008, we were able to go through the hallways like it was normal, but we knew that it was, we had a growing community. What I will tell you is Dr. Musalem, from, you know, upgrading the facilities and, and seeing what you've been able to do without a bond, you know, is remarkable. And that's, you know, a round of applause to you and your staff. I can tell you, my next door neighbor's a counselor at the Crestwood School District, is always raving about the hard work that you continue to put in. And she actually said, I wanna work under Dr. Musalem. And there are people in different districts that have told me, Crestwood is lucky to have Dr. Musalem. And I want you to know, I'm not just saying that to guess you up because you took over the room tonight. This is the honest truth. But to the, to the young Mr. Abdullah, who talked about being an athlete, I remember going to Plymouth and watching a wrestling meet and seeing the way these kids had the facility. And then I went back to Crestwood because my nephew wrestles, and they had this tall, small little room. I think I emailed trustee Elzayat, and I said, we need to resolve this. We need new mats. Like, the room smelt like pure odor. You know, it's not even ADA compliant. But I will tell you this right now, Crestwood has an amazing wrestling team. And they have amazing sports, but the wrestling team is actually one of the best wrestling teams in the, in the state, if not the country. They have great staff. They have great coaches. And I, you know, I pray one day my son and my daughter are gonna attend Crestwood, and they're gonna also be, I know my son's gonna be a wrestler. At least I beg, I hope he does. He's not tall enough to do anything else. But, but I, but I can tell you that I'm gonna push for him to be a wrestler. And so one of the things, when I hear this bond, I think, I went through the, the different activities where, you know, Dr. Musalem invited a bunch of people from the community, said, what do you want? What do you expect? And if you saw what everybody really wanted was a better quality of life for our children. And I also added in there a better gym for our athletes and maybe a better wrestling room. But if you look at something like the weight rooms, right? When I was there in 2008, the weight room was brand new. That was 2008. It's still the same, same exact stuff. Like, I think Hype gave over a couple of machines to you guys, but looking at some of the equipment, I was so embarrassed. And, and so really, you know, I can't really speak much on how to vote. But what I can tell you is, even if this gets me in any trouble, Madam Clerk, I 100% support that, and I pray that this passes for you guys. Council Chair?
Yes.
Councilman?
You know, all the negative comments about the Crestwood High School, I had the honor of hosting a family fun event there recently, and I had access to the school. What they've got there is so well-maintained. You would never think they have an issue, but you can tell. I mean, everything's clean. Their kitchen is fantastic. I don't want people to get the wrong idea that this is a rundown school. It just needs upgrading. I mean, it's in phenomenal condition for what they've got. And someone I just wanted to give a quick shout out to in the National Honor Society sponsor, Diana Johns. She does a great job. I mean, she's, she's a fantastic person.
Council Chair?
Yes.
I did forget to mention one thing, too, that I found kinda disturbing. The students are unable to use the lockers there because of the one-way hallways. By the time they get to the locker and use the one-way hallway to come back around the school to get to their room, they're late. So they carry a backpack with them, with all their books in it.
So you guys don't, really, you can't use?
I mean, they have a locker to use, but it's just hard for them to get all the way.
Locker number 234.
Some of us don't even have lockers. I've had my locker for three years, and it doesn't even open. And I've complained multiple times. It still doesn't open.
You're throwing Dr. Musalem under the bus on his... All right. Anyone else from the audience, before I head over to Zoom? Yep. Please stop up, state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Dave Kaufman, Kingsbury, Dearborn Heights. First of all, I appreciate what council has to say about Gaza. But please remember, there are atheists like me and Jewish people living in Dearborn Heights as well. And I am not saying, I think the first person that ought to go to the International Criminal Court ought to be Benjamin Netanyahu. But I think the second person that ought to go to the International Criminal Court is Yaya Sinwar. And, and I think that there's a disservice done when, you know, I agree with all the political statements that have been said. I disagree that that's right for a city council to be making those stances when we have all sorts of citizens in Dearborn Heights. That's my only point with that. As for Crestwood Schools, I totally support the bond. Nevertheless, I've had to engage in litigation with Dr. Musalem because the school district, when I went to inquire about how they were updating their Title IX requirements for LGBTQ students, I got abused, thrown out, and banned from school district property. That's resulted in me talking to a couple of law firms, filing complaints with the Michigan Office of Civil Rights, and filing a complaint against Dr. Musalem's license. So I don't know what's going on at Crestwood, but I do know this. And I've talked to Chief Schwupp about it. There is a problem with gay kids being sexually assaulted. Not just here in Dearborn Heights. It's a metro Detroit problem. But when I approached the school to see what they were doing for gay kids, I got so abused that I've got a perfect federal lawsuit. And I called Mr. Farina to let him know that there was a Dearborn Heights cop involved and asked him to call me back as a matter of courtesy, and I've yet to hear from him. So I filed my complaints. I've consulted with a white shoe law firm here in Detroit. And we're gonna proceed firmly because I'm not gonna have gay kids unprotected by a school district, and that's exactly what I think is going on at Crestwood Schools right now. And I don't think that, and I'm gonna say this upfront, I don't think that Dr. Musalem is fit for purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. We just clapped something?
Ray Muscat, Havelock Street, Dearborn Heights. We, we, I was gonna come up here and speak about something else, but I'm gonna let the next, my, my friend here, Zoheer, speak about what we discussed when we spoke together. But water came up, which is a real, has been a big problem. About, I'm gonna guess, 15 to 18 years ago, I kept bringing up the handheld instrument that we use to plug in to read the water meters that are outside of everybody's home or business. I always wanted to know, when was that last calibrated? Who calibrated it? And where can I see the calibration? Now, as a industrial mechanic, okay, our electricians are required daily to go to a known live electrical panel and test their electrical equipment to make sure that it's functioning properly, okay? And this is by using multiple meters to make sure that they all coincide. I have yet to see anything like that ever happen in a city. But going back a little bit, not, not to the real past distance, but when I was on council, when we approved $9 million for water meters. And I, I don't know the exact vote total. It may have been two or three. I know I was one, and I believe Lisa Hicks Clayton was the other one, that voted no to combine the money with CSO projects. Because I knew what was gonna happen with the $9 million. It would go away like the dodo bird, okay? And when we were told about these water meters, as someone, somewhat in the trades profession, my ears went up, okay? And I asked a question, was this all the money we needed to replace the water meters of various sizes, okay? And was the infrastructure going to be there to support all that? We were told yes. Now... Now, flash forward a few years, the infrastructure was never added in with that $9 million. No software. How were these water meters gonna communicate to, to send the, the meter readings? And going back a little bit about highway, I got one of those yellow tags, and I found a leak in my, at my house, but my wife actually found it because she kept telling me she heard something running, and I said, ah, you're, you're dreaming. And it was actually my pipe going out to my sprinkler system was broke. Uh, but that's been repaired, and I know that I had a problem with that. But I have helped people that have called me about water bills, and I've gone to their homes, and believe it or not, I find leaks that nobody ever thinks they have. Okay? This is water, this is water that's running constantly, that they don't know that's running. People that take showers for 40, 45 minutes. You know, the average person, if you look at it, uses pretty close to 50, 60 gallons a day in a household. And, and that adds up. All you gotta do is get yourself a five-gallon bucket, put it on your spigot on the outside, put a stopwatch on, turn it out, and see how fast.
Thank you, Mr. Muscat.
It's food for thought.
Mr. Muscat. We thank you for that, Mr. Muscat. I will tell you, though, uh, I agree, there, there are probably definitely issues with water leaks.
Oh, there's no doubt.
But, but there's also something in the back of my mind saying that not every single person that has an $8,000 one.
I brought up the fact about the handheld meters.
Oh, yes, 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 I heard you.
And, and, and things of that nature, because, you know, that's been a problem for, for, in this city for, as long as I've been coming here for 25 years.
Yeah.
Okay? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muscat.
Good evening again, Zoheer Adlhat, Rosemary. Uh, almost a year ago, the council passed 7-0 resolution to put on November 5th this year, uh, something to elect Charter Commission.
True.
I would like to ask Mr. Farina, what happened to that? We are three weeks away from, or four weeks from 5th of November. Why this hasn't done, has been done?
Why it hasn't been done is that you've, um, uh, we've had a budget crisis, we were about to shut the city down. We've had about, uh, three different motions to remove me, um, and attempts, so I think it'd be good to restart it again, uh, but we have been sidetracked. I have finished six ordinances for the city. I just finished the Blight ordinance that I was requested to do, I've passed it to the administration to, for final review. I finished the, uh, food truck ordinance, I finished the short-term rental ordinance. Um, we've done about another three, which I can go into. But yes, I, I have been working, but it has been distracted, and I agree with you.
Thank you.
I don't mind if we sit down and, and, because we, I think we talked about doing it for maybe next, the next election, I think we'd have to go around April. There are timelines, and I've done a, a actual legal brief, uh, opinion letter that has summarized the process and procedures to follow. We just need to revisit it, sir, and then we can get more.
My concern is, when the city council passes a resolution, that's a direction to the administration to do something. Either it means something, or your resolution is worthless. So I hope that we follow up on this, and if Mr. Farina is busy on, or having a problem with budget, that maybe we can hire some law firm who's specialized in this kind of work and pay him to do it for us.
We'll get yelled at all over Facebook if we did that again.
Uh, I don't see why not. Try and see that you will be able to fund, uh, law firm, and it has to be done because this charter is since 1963. It's very old, and I don't see any reason why your resolution is not being executed and done one way or another. The second thing, you are, you guys are looking for $1.5 million or $1.3 million, I think, Mr. Schwop? Okay. The city has properties worth over $1.5 million, sitting doing nothing, collecting dust. Why don't we do some work and work collectively with the administration to put those properties, you know, out for bed in a transparent way, and get that money and get the 10 police officers for him? That's where your money is. Get that money and hire those 10 police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Um, I wanted to let you guys know Joey's two-year memorial, it will be Monday, the 14th, at 9:00 PM at the part, the corner of Party in Annapolis. Um, I also wanted to bring up the fact that Katie and I went door-to-door to get 75% of the neighbors. Of, I think, all but two of the neighbors answered the doors. Every single one of them told us something needs to be done around the school zones. It's ridiculous. I've been fighting for two years. I said three years at the last meeting that I was here in person at. I want to correct myself, it's been two years, it'll be two years, the 14th. Every single one of those residents have told me something needs to be done. Speed bumps, signage, something needs to be done. Um, I do have my friend that lives on the block, won't let my, my nieces and nephews play out front because of it. When I had went to decorate Joey's corner with Katie, I was there maybe 10 minutes. Mind you, 2:30 PM, kids get out at 3:00. At least 10 cars have ran that stop sign, the very corner that Joey was hit and killed at. That's my piece on that. I just want to put that out there.
Counsel, counsel, uh, for time, just pause there for a second. Margaret, I sent you a message in email.
You did.
To email me.
You did.
And you've never emailed me.
I never emailed you, but I did text it to you, so I have to copy that text message and put it in an email for you.
Yeah, and just, I, I needed the exact location.
The corner, you want, all the, I, me and Katie went around two years ago, and we went around every corners, and we looked at, I can email you all that information.
If you could email me that information, that's all I'd need, and I've been waiting on it from you or Rachel.
I did get, I did get a promotion at work, so I've been getting up at 4:30 in the morning.
Well, please, I, I need, I'm trying to help you, I just need that information.
I will.
Thank you.
And, and we, don't forget, we passed a million-dollar resolution.
I know.
And in honor of Joey Smith's name, I, all of, and all the school districts. Uh, I think I spoke before the board as well at the Crestwood School Board.
I've had, I've met with, he's awesome, he's amazing, I can't brag enough about him.
Yeah, so like, I mean, we passed this resolution, it's, we're waiting on something to be done.
I know, I know.
No, we're, at the end of the day, we have to stay in our lane to some degree, where like, what are you doing? It's been three years.
Right, been two years. I cracked, I had to correct myself. It's...
Well, we've been fighting for, for a little, little over 10 years. Councilman Muscat was, has been screaming about this for however many years.
I know. Um, I also want to say what's going on overseas, it breaks my heart. I work with these ladies that have lost family members in Lebanon and everywhere over in the Middle East. It breaks my heart, it needs to stop. I've had ladies walk out of work because her, lost her mother and father to a bombing. I just wanted to hug her, and my heart goes out to you all that are losing family members. It needs to stop.
Thank you. Gentlemen, also ask for an additional minute. Grand sir, state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Okay, my name is Ron Frenzy, live on Fairwood in Dearborn Heights, and I'm here to support Ms. King and just dovetail on a little bit of the things that she needs. So I was driving recently in Westland, and I, and I saw this Cooper Elementary School in Westland, which is on Ann Arbor Trail, half mile west of Instra Road, and they have exactly what we need. So it just, when I saw it, it just, just overwhelmingly hit me. What they have is a flashing sign, which is solar-powered on either side of the school, that flashes the speed of the car going by that sign, plus a neon crossing sign on another post, which is like adult walking two kids. So the, the expensive part here is the solar-powered sign, five years ago, it cost $3,700, now it's $4,700. But the beauty of that is, it's solar-powered, you don't have to dig any kind of a trench, you don't have to hook up to electricity, all you do is put, put a hole in the ground and set it up. So if you would drive by this Cooper Elementary School, you would see how good the sign is. Most signs are, are what I call soft light, like the stop signs, the red, the yellow, and the green, but this is blinding, uh, knee, blinding LED lights, and it really captures your attention. So your eyes veer to that sign, and then just beyond that, you would have a crossing guard sign. And the best place to put this would be, the placement would be on the north side and the south side of Crestwood High School. And to get somebody's help, you could maybe contact the Commissioner, David Kinesik, and he helps, he could maybe help. Or Ms. Erin, maybe she could help. And over in Westland, I have a little red star there. The Police Department, if you call this direct line, you, and contact the Sergeant Paris, he's in charge of all these, these kinds of signs. And I would encourage maybe somebody to, from the council to go see him and, and just fi, fi, find out what their experience has actually been. So at the bottom, this is four examples.